This is your city council. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel. And city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Well, good morning. We'll call the February 11th city council meeting to order. We thank you for joining us. We will begin this meeting as we begin all our meetings, and that's by asking God's presence on this place. Before former councillor Anthony comes to the microphone, though, this is the first meeting after the passing of our clerk, Sandra Davis. So before councillor Anthony comes up here, if I could, ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Wayne? If you'll push that button, I'll get the light turned on. Should be a light on the top of it. There we go.
Got it. You'd think I would know how to work this.
It's been a while.
It's been a year, Skip. Mr. Mayor, we call that a memorial minute.
Yes, a moment.
And it reminds all of us of the persons who've been among us, who've served us and helped us. And you start thinking back and appreciating those that have been a part of the city government and served our community. Let us pray together. Eternal and almighty and everlasting God, we give thanks and praise to your name. We honor you and we glorify you, and we give thanks to those you have sent our way who've made a difference in our individual lives, but then also in the collective life of our community. Thank you for these that are here this day, both working in the city and for the city. Bless them, bless their families, bless the organizations from which they come, bless our community. May we be a light and to those whose path is unclear and a shining hope to those who seek a purpose in life. And bless these who are making decisions for us, that they be anointed and inspired. Courage and protect them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just for us all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business to approve the minutes. All right, there's a motion to approve the minutes from January 28th. Was there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we do, we have our third public hearing in the event that council recommends opting out of House Bill 581. And you want me to call, you, Mr. City Manager, or you want me to call deputy city manager Pam Hodge?
Mr. Mayor, we will ask a deputy city manager, Hodge, to come to the podium first, but you've said it's the third public meeting on House Bill 581. The law required that we have three, and this is the third. And the members of council will need to make a decision. They can make that decision today, or they could make that decision at the next city council meeting. But we will need to make a decision whether we opt out or not opt out. And so with that, I'll ask deputy city manager Pam Hodge to introduce or present our tax assessor, who will walk us through this.
Good morning, Mayor and council. As the city manager mentioned, this is our third public hearing to discuss opting out of the floating homestead exemption. This was part of House Bill 581 that was on the ballot in November of 2024. We do have a little pamphlet for frequently asked questions on the back table for anyone that's interested in picking up one of these. Our chief appraiser, Suzanne Widenhouse, will walk through a presentation, and this is a public meeting, so we will allow any questions from the public related to this subject. So at this time, I'll have Suzanne Widenhouse come up and go through the presentation and open up the public meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you for having me again. Seems like I'm up here all the time anymore. This is the same presentation that I actually presented to council a couple of weeks ago. I've been presenting it to all of the public meetings so that the taxpayers can see it as well. This is in regards to House Bill 581. There was a provision within that bill. The whole purpose of the bill was to adjust ad valorem tax provisions, but there was a provision in this bill for a floating homestead that required a accompanying House resolution. And that resolution passed in November on the ballot. And with that, a provision went into effect allowing us to opt out of the floating homestead if we so choose. The opt-out period began 1 January and runs through the 1st of March. So any decision has to be made prior to that. If we choose to opt out, we have to have that completed and be to the Secretary of State with all of the appropriate documentation by March 1st. So it created a floating homestead, which sets a base year and allows that value to adjust with an inflationary index year over year. And for those counties, like Muskogee County, who already have a homestead freeze in place, this would allow the taxpayers to have whichever homestead is more beneficial. And I have some examples coming up to show different scenarios where the freeze is more beneficial, where the float's more beneficial, to give people an idea. This exemption is in addition to, not in lieu of, the non-floating portion of the homestead exemptions. And that portion, if anybody remembers looking at their notice of assessment, that's the 13,500 that's taken off of the assessed value, the frozen value of a homestead, or 21,000 if you're over the age of 65 and meet certain income restrictions. So this is in addition to that, not in lieu of that. Again, counties can opt out of this. It requires advertising, conducting the three hearings. This is the third hearing that's required. Right now, it's estimated that between 85% to 90% of the school districts will be opting out of this. So that means only 20 to 25, 26 school districts are going to stay in. And out of counties, the anecdotal evidence that we have so far, provided by information from the GAO and from the ACCG, is about 50% of the counties are planning on opting out. So what is it? And how is it different than what we already have? First is to understand that this is a separate homestead. This is not, this does not affect our frozen homestead. These are two programs that would run side by side if we don't opt out. The local value is what we call our Muskogee County frozen homestead. That's how we refer to it. We call it the local value. This base year value is this floating homestead. Ours is frozen, the floating is just that. It floats. It allows it to increase or decrease depending on what the inflationary index says. The inflationary index will be determined by the state of Georgia, and right now, they are proposing using a national CPI. It's the all-urban consumer CPI is what they're talking about using. So the base year value is going to be set at 40% of the fair market value for 2024. This takes effect for 2025 if we choose not to opt out, and the base year value will be whatever the fair market value was in 2024. It'll be 40% of that value. So if you have a local value, your local value stays whatever that local value was. If you put your homestead on back in the 80s or 90s or even last year, that local value is locked. But the base year value will be whatever the fair, 40% of the fair market value for 2024 was. It does allow for an increase or decrease according to the inflationary factor, and also an increase or decrease for substantial changes to the property. Now, our floating homes, our frozen homestead also allows for increases to the property for substantial change. If somebody puts a big addition on the house, we add that value to their, of the addition to their frozen value. So some examples. This first example is assuming that somebody placed homestead on their property in 2019. At the time, the property was worth $280,000, so their assessed value in 2019 was $112,000. They placed their homestead on the property and they froze their local value at $112,000. We've assumed growth rate and fair market value for the purposes of this exercise at $400,000, which would mean for 2024, which would mean the base value would be established at $160,000 for that floating homestead. The local would be at 112, the floating would be at 160. We've assumed a 4.5% growth rate. That's over the last 50 years, that's what it averages to, but an assumed inflation rate of 5%. So you'll see that the local value stays locked at 112, the fair market value's gone up to 418. The base value has now been adjusted to 167,200. So that would be, if they were on a floating, that would have been their taxable value. Because we have the frozen value, that's our ceiling. We're not going to go above the frozen value. It's going to, 112 is where it's going to top out. So that's the ceiling. In this particular example, I've shown where we have a downturn in the market and an index that goes down, and you can see that it will drop that value. In this particular case, it doesn't drop it enough to affect that freeze, but I have some other examples where it would drop it lower than that, and all of a sudden you would be on the float and not on the freeze. So there's no floor. So this is a brand-new homestead. This would be somebody who acquired their property, say, in 2024, fair market value of 400,000 that year. Their local value would be 160, their base value would be the exact same because we're using, the law says the floating is based on that 2024 fair market value. So they're the exact same, but as we go through the various years, you see that we stay locked on the frozen at 160, whereas that floating homestead continues to increase. In the years where we show a downturn for this particular example, you will see that it goes below the frozen value, which means that they would pay based on a lower value. There is no floor. There's a ceiling, but there's no floor. If they have damage to the property, significant damage to the property, or if they make a major change to the property, in this case, I used an example where a house was destroyed by fire. The law states that if somebody is homesteaded and their home is destroyed by fire, they get a full year to rebuild, where they keep their homestead and nothing changes. If they rebuild their property to the same exact footprint that they initially had, once they move back in, their local value stays. It doesn't change. They're now in new construction, but their value doesn't change. They have a newborn on date for that house, but their value stays at whatever they were frozen. Under the floating homestead, it allows for the value to be reassessed if there's a major change to the property. In this particular case, with the fire taking place in the third year on this particular example, where the fair market value drops to 100,000, that's basically the value of the land. The house is gone, it's been burned. The homestead is still there. They still get that exemption. But because that's a major change to the property, we are able to then reassess that, and it's the value of the land only. It's a major change, so it drops down. The following year, they've rebuilt, that value goes back up based on a substantial change to the property and gets reset to 40% of whatever the fair market value would be for that brand-new construction, because it's a major change to the property. Whereas with a frozen value, they get to keep that 112,000. It stays the same. Homes with an addition. The way we add the value for the addition is, we don't do this based on cost. It's whatever that addition, the value that it adds to. In our particular case, we started with a house that was worth 400,000. They put an addition on it that added $200,000 to the value of the home. We're not talking about what it costs to build that addition, but that's what the value was added to that home. We take that value that was added and we add 40% of that to the local value. We don't reassess the entire property, so the main component of the house stays the same. We just add the value of the addition to that frozen value. Same thing would happen with the floating exemption. And you'll see in this particular example that regardless of the massive addition, the frozen, our frozen local value is still the more beneficial, even with a downturn in the market towards the end. In a situation where we have a dramatic decrease in valuations circa the 2007, 2008, 2009 downturn, in that case, you could have situations where, or you have somebody whose house is in a neighborhood that's declining, where their, their frozen value becomes more than their assessed value, the fair market value, 40% value of their home. In that case, they're locked in on the local, but on the floating, it allows for that to decrease based on the, an index going down. So if we have, if the CPI goes down, then their value could be reduced. There are implications to this. There's programming, there's additional staff. There are requirements to, if we don't opt out, to compare the two. Our local homestead limits the acreage to two acres. There is no acreage limit currently on the floating homestead. So if you have a property that has five acres, the local value freezes the house in two acres, and the remaining three acres would be on what's called an H account. That H account is fair market value. With this particular floating homestead, the, the house and all five acres would be valued on a, based on the base year, subject to the index. So we would have to compare those every single year. Currently, the way our system is set up, there are two separate accounts. This is a manual process for us to do. And that would be a requirement. So anybody that has a property that's split by district, so if you have a service district 1 property that, that's, has service district 2 running through it as well, so you may have an A account as well as an H account, you may have five acres sitting at the district, the service district line, and so you could have literally three accounts that we would be comparing. So this has the ability to get very, very complex and very convoluted, and very difficult to see which is the most beneficial for a taxpayer to understand, because they would be looking at multiple notices and trying to figure out which one's the best, and it would be a manual process for us. What I, if we opt out, what does that mean? The current homestead stays in place. That does not change. Opting out, it does not mean that we are taking away the freeze. It's not the case. It would eliminate confusion as to which homestead should be applying, or possibly both. If council chooses not to opt out and the school board does, we will be maintaining both sets of values, and we will be undergoing this process regardless. If council opts out and the school board doesn't, I have the same situation. Still going to happen that way. We would reduce some implementation expenses for House Bill 581. There's some other things that, part of that bill that, that have some expenses involved. This isn't the only one, but it would reduce the amount of expenses for that. It would reduce the risk to the tax revenue in a market downturn, because it would keep it much more stable. With, with having a ceiling and no floor, it puts the revenue at risk, and it, it means shifting to other places, because I don't know about everybody else, but I personally like police service, I like fire service, I like trash pickup, I like all of those services that the city offers. And in order to do that, if we have a downturn, we ought to shift if we leave the floating homestead in place, because there's a ceiling, but again, there is no floor. Values can go down according to that index that the Department of Revenue chooses and sets, and they could change this law, and I'll get to that in just a second. If we opt out, that does not mean that Muskogee County can never input, you know, put in place a floating-type homestead. We can. We can ask the legislature to approve a local one that's controlled by Muskogee County, that's not controlled by the state and isn't subject to a national index. So opting out doesn't foreclose that right. But if we don't opt out, we are forever stuck with this particular floating homestead, which can be subject to change. House Bill 581 has some cleanup already on the table in the legislature right now. They're already talking about making changes to what was passed and to what the voters approved last November. Some of the changes that they're talking about making include changes to the, the amount of acres. They're talking about capping that at five, which is why I keep using the five-acre example. They are making changes as far as the way it passes from, from one spouse to another if a spouse passes away. We already have a way in place for our local to pass. It requires one little extra step, which is to go down and visit our newly-elected tax commissioner and have the surviving spouse sign the homestead card, and they get to keep that freeze. So we already have things like that in place for our, our local, but they're making changes on the state side. Some of the other changes are, you know, changes to opt-out dates, those kind of things, but it's still sitting in committee, and so we don't have the option of saying, well, let's just kind of wait and see. Hearings had to be held. They're talking about changing the requirements for estimating the rollback rate to the tax assessor's office, since we're not currently included in that certification. Those are some of the other, the other changes that are being proposed. So that's the gist of what this floating homestead does. One other issue that's not mentioned here in this presentation, and I didn't really touch on it, because it doesn't affect Muskogee County, but I think people need to understand, this law also had a floss included in it. For those counties that are not consolidated, or for those counties that don't already have something like a floating homestead, there's a floss that they can put into place to make up for loss of revenue due to holding values, and which the floating does. If you have 5% increase and the index only goes up three, you're creating a spread. So those counties, they can input, they can put into place a floss and get an extra penny. We can't. We're tapped out. There is no ability there to, to say, okay, well, we'll just put in another floss if we have a downturn and our market starts to tank and, and values go down. There is no ability to, to counteract that with a floss. We don't have that option. We're topped out. The other issue that we have is that there are caps to millage rates. You can only raise them so much, which means that if bottom falls out, we're going to have to look at budget cuts. We can raise the millage rate to a certain extent, but that's it. Our frozen homestead is much more stable than something like a float, where there's a ceiling but, but no floor. So for us, personally, I think it's, you know, it's best if we opt out, that's my personal opinion. I've talked to a lot of taxpayers. I talk to taxpayers all the time. They come into my office on a very regular basis, and the general consensus is that we don't need to undergo the expense when we have a good freeze in place. It's better than what the floss, better than what the floating homestead offers, and it's, it's a lot less confusing to just have the one program. But I am available to answer any questions that folks in the audience might have, that council might have. This is, this is your hearing.
Mr. City Manager.
So Mayor, first, I'd like to thank the tax assessor for attending and presenting at all three hearings. As you know, we had two yesterday, and at the first hearing, we had a gentleman from Bunker Hill to come, and he was a, expressed that he was a veteran, and he did ask that this council opt out. Basically, he knows what he has and he wants to live with what he has. And then at the 6 o'clock hearing, we had, I don't know how many people, but I will say, you know, somewhere close to 10 people. There were three speakers, because we invite people to go to the microphone in the center of the floor to speak. The gentleman from Bunker Hill came back, and he spoke again, the gentleman from Bunker Hill, and he asked that this council would opt out. We had a gentleman, we had some people, a few people from Chatham Wood. The gentleman asked that this body would opt out, and the third speaker, I can't remember what area of town they were from, to speak.
Sears Woods.
Sears Woods, okay. Asked that this council opt out. They are, the ones who spoke are comfortable with what we have, they know what we have, basically, and they asked that this body would opt out. Again, the floor is open today, and there's a microphone, and any citizen can go to that microphone and ask questions or share your thoughts. And so we invite citizens to do that at this time.
And we've, we televised live the first two hearings as we are this one, and I didn't ask, I made an assumption, but I've been asked by Mayor Procham, that will be replayed, the presentation from Ms. Widenhouse on our CCG TV. Certainly, this will be, will be.
Well, and I will say, this will be rebroadcast three times a day, today, for the next two weeks. And so this will be the one that we will rebroadcast. Again, we're asking speakers, if you're interested in this topic, want to ask a question for clarification, or share your thoughts as to whether you recommend the council opt out or not opt out. And if we, we don't appear to have any speakers, Mayor, and so unless there are questions from the, you or the council, that will, that will conclude the public hearing.
We will deem that hearing to have been held. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, it's, it's clear to me what's in the best interest of Muskogee County, and I wanted to, nobody's talking about this, but I want to read the actual, what the citizens voted on. And I can make the case, you didn't vote on House Bill 581. You didn't. What was on the ballot was Constitutional Amendment 1. Nowhere in there did it say House Bill 581. As the tax assessor says, there are already... As the tax assessor says, they're already making plans to change 581 and add a sales tax, a floss, and I think that's just a tax on food and beverage and gas and cigarettes and things like, I mean, it's
That's already in there.
Yeah, but that's what the tax is on.
Yep.
Grocery items. You know, to me, that's inflationary. So, you know, these are things that the citizens, I didn't know that, I didn't know that these changes, I can see how it benefits counties and cities that don't have the structure we have, and how they need something, and their citizens are concerned about their property taxes keep going up, they don't have anything to balance it.
Exactly.
So this helps them, but it really doesn't help us based on your slides up here, it's clear, the percentages were not in favor under a floating-type structure is being proposed. But I want to read the actual, what we voted on. I want people to understand this, because in reality, you could have voted yes, but you could have voted yes to opt out. Because when you read the language in here, the way it says, you could have been for, hey, I'm in favor of a floating homestead exemption, but I'm also in favor of my city opting out if it's not the best interest. That's what it says. I'm going to read this, so everybody knows. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you have this?
I do.
And if you can put it up? I mean, can it be put up?
Yes, I can text it to someone that can print it.
And I don't know if anybody's even making this point.
Here, I have a printed copy right here, if somebody can
Yeah, but if we will put it up. And Counselor Davis, if, you know, man, just if I say this?
Sure.
The citizen from Bunker Hill expressed exactly what you, you're expressing, what he voted on yesterday, the gentleman from Bunker Hill, exactly what you see, what you're saying is what he said.
Well, after our last council meeting, I was challenged to go back and do a lot more work on this, a lot more homework, and then I went back and actually found the, what we voted on, and they were all Constitutional Amendment 1, Constitutional Amendment 2, Constitutional Amendment 3. I mean, there wasn't any, when you went to the voter box, you didn't see anything else on there, that's all you saw. So I want to read that, and I don't think that's what was on the ballot.
Mm-hmm, that's exactly what was on the ballot.
Well, I've got what exactly was on that ballot right here, and it was sent to me, and it says, Constitutional Number 1, provides for a general law statewide homestead exemption that may differentiate among political subdivisions. That's what was on there. Okay. It said something about House Resolution 1022, Georgia L 2024, but here's what it says. Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in assessed value of homesteads, but which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out of upon the completion of certain procedures. So, you know, that looks reasonable to me, that if I voted yes, I'm going to leave it up either way, whatever's in the best interest. I could have been voted yes and voted on a floating homestead exemption, but I could have voted yes and still was in support of opting out. That's right, there's two questions there, and both of them, you vote yes, you're really voting to either opt out or, you know, just look at, basically, it gives your city the opportunity to look at what's best, and that's a reasonable expectation there. And I don't think, that's why I said it was very, very confusing, and not a lot of information, but there's the other side of the story, which you touched on today. Our county, if we lose revenue on the homestead, now, we're only talking homestead, everybody understands homestead, that's just a small, how many homestead owners do we have, 60,000, 70,000? 59?
Approximately
So we have approximately 33,000 homes that are homesteaded. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of 65,000 residences, of which less than half are homesteaded.
That would be, you would assume they're renting.
Yeah, the remainder would be rentals, yeah.
So what would happen is you take 30,000 people, essentially, and you lose that revenue, like you said, a down period. What you would do is shift that, the city would take that tax burden, the lost revenue here, and then they're going to put it on the other people. They're going to put on businesses, they're going to put it on the renters. You know, we talk about affordable housing all the time, apartments and the others, they're just going to go, they're going to pass that, that increase on to you, or we're going to expand the urban service districts or raise the millage in other places. That's what the reality of what could happen, which is not in the benefit of Columbus, Georgia. And like I said, when the challenges that we have on the horizon, Mayor, with a new jail, and some of these other projects that we've done, and we got to do the operational cost, and we have to service the debt on all this stuff, if you ever get in a bind, you're obligated to do that, you'll have no other choice but to raise the millage in the debt service column. If the school district doesn't get the East Plus, they're going to raise their millage, and they're not even close to a nine-mill cap. And then Urban Service District 1 is close to a nine-mill cap, but Urban Service District 2 is not, you'll have to raise that one up to catch up. So that's kind of the scenario that we could be looking at, which, to me, does not play into the best interest, which this amendment clearly says that if you want to opt out, it's not in your best favor, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to make one quick comment. Counselor Crabbe pointed out that our tax commissioner is here, David Britt, so if there's any questions of Mr. Britt, he can, he can answer those as well. Mr. City Attorney, did you have?
Just a couple of comments, Mayor. As Ms. Widenhouse noted, the staying in or opting out will not affect the local homestead assessment freeze that we have in Columbus, but if counselors do want to make a motion to opt out after hearing everybody that wants to be heard, there is a resolution around the table, and you can either take it up today or the end of the month, preferably today, for the clerk to get things off in the record. Anybody else want to be heard?
The, I don't know if that, I don't know if that bill has passed and been signed by the governor, but there is House Bill 92 that is an effort to slow it down just a little bit and delay the date where you have to opt out.
That bill is still in committee.
Okay.
It hasn't even come out of committee, it hasn't hit the floor yet.
So it has not come out yet?
No, the school district has not voted, they have two more hearings next Tuesday, one at noon and one at 6:00.
All right, well, we will, we will deem the public hearing to have been held and the requirement satisfied if, in the event the council, the council wants to opt out. They have the opportunity to make that motion for discussion now, or they can wait till the next, next council meeting. All right, there's a motion and a second to opt out of the statewide floating tax freeze. Is there any further discussion to that item? Hearing, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There's, if you would, raise your right hand if you are in favor of the opting out.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
All right, and if you are against. Okay, that passes, so Muskogee County will notify the proper personnel, tell them we are opting out.
Yes, sir, the clerk's office, I would ask that they work with the city attorney's office, Mayor, to file with the Secretary of State so that we know that we've done exactly in the way that they require, so. I want to thank, again, the tax assessor, the tax commissioner, they've been at the hearings, he and his staff, and thank those citizens who came out and participated and let their voices be heard, Mayor. That concludes the hearing.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a couple of presentations on the mayor's agenda. The first is FY '24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. David Irwin, the external auditor from Alden and Jenkins, if y'all would come on up.
All right. PowerPoint presentation, just, can we make that? Okay, okay, good deal. All right, well, good morning, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name is David Irwin, and I'm with Alden Jenkins. I was the partner, whoever saw this year's audit of the government's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this morning to discuss you the results of this year's audit. You know, the purpose of my presentation is to provide you all an overview of my, of our independent auditors' report, talk about the results of the two compliance reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all, and then to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management and members of the council. As your independent auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally-accepted auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can revise your external audit. What this means is that, again, in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally-accepted accounting principles. Again, as part of the audit, there are two compliance reports that we also issue, the first of which is the single audit report. Again, a single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity has over $750,000 of federal expenditures during the year. The government had around $35.5 million of federal expenditures in FY '24. As was the case with the single, as was the case with the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. The second compliance report is the yellow book report, and this is a report on the government's internal controls and your compliance with various laws, regulations. And I'm happy to say that we do not have any audit findings reporting you all this year, meaning we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the government's internal controls during our audit. And, you know, with you all being one of the largest cities in Georgia, there's obviously a significant amount of financial activity for which you all have to account for. In addition, you know, with all the changes, with all the GASP implementations that are required each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process is, it makes it all more impressive to be able to present to you all an audit that not only has a clean opinion, but also has no audit findings. So again, that's certainly something that council, management, and staff should be proud of and commended for. I do want to thank management and staff for their hard work this year. You know, as always, they were very accommodating to our audit team and worked hard to address all of our questions, to get us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized by the 12/31 deadline. Yeah, I also want to thank your audit committee. You know, we met, we met with them in September prior to beginning of the audit. We communicated with them throughout the audit to keep them updated on the audit process, and we, I met with them about an hour and a half last week to go over the audit results. You know, again, they were very engaged, they asked a lot of good questions, and, you know, we were able to go through the audit in more detail than time would allow for me to do with you all today. So, you know, that additional layer and oversight to the audit process is important, and, you know, if I'm in your shoes, it's comforting to know that you all have a strong audit committee to oversee that process. So again, that's certainly, that's certainly something you all should be proud of and commended for. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. Again, you all prepared what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an acter. An acter requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as the GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. They have their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee that looks at your report, and, you know, when they, when they look at the government's acter, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the government. What they want to do is make sure that the necessary information is in this report so the readers of your financial statements can do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA has once again awarded the government the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that certificate is included in this year's document. And this is, as you can see on the slide, this is the 34th year in a row that the government has received this award. You know, as I've mentioned to you all before, you know, we audit around 750 governments across the nation. Of those 750 governments, around 175 get this certificate, but I tell you, very few can say that they've received this certificate for 30-plus years. So again, just another testament to you all going above and beyond and continuing to raise the bar. And again, this document is an impressive document, and it's certainly something you all should be proud of. As you look through the report, you know, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. It's right after our audit opinion in the document. I would strongly encourage everybody to read this section. The purpose of the MDNA is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements, and it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the financial statements from management's perspective. So if you have any questions about any fluctuations, anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, oftentimes you can, you can find your answer within the, within the MDNA. In addition, there's, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section, meaning there's financial information for not only FY '24, but also FY '23, and, you know, to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader, it gives you a much better understanding of the current year activity when you have those prior year numbers there for comparative purposes. So, you know, your acter's 250 pages, so, you know, the MDNA does a really good job of summarizing that information, summarizing this document, and, again, just providing an analytical overview with the financial statements. So again, if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read the MDNA. The government's basic financial statements are broken down into three components, the first of which is the government-wide statements. Again, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the government's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in private sector business. All the funds of the government in this section are combined in one of two columns. You have a governmental activities column and also a business-type activities column. But, you know, we have a slide here that summarizes the government's financial activity for the year, again, from the government-wide perspective. You know, I won't talk about every number on the slide, but again, as you can see, we have a government, we have a column for the government itself, your component units, which again are your airport commission, your waterworks, your Department of Health, and then we also have the duchery column, which again is your pension trust funds, your tax commissioner, probate court, et cetera. But, you know, in just looking at the government itself, you know, as you can see, you all ended the year with assets of around 1.4 billion. Of that amount, around 628 million are your capital assets, net of accumulated appreciation. Again, when I talk about capital assets, that's the land, buildings, machinery, equipment that's owned by the government. Total liabilities around 776 million. Of that amount, around 536 million are long-term in nature, meaning, you know, they're not due within the next fiscal year. You all had revenues around 478 million, that's an increase of around 63 million compared to FY '23. You know, again, much of this increase is attributed to your taxes, you know, the various taxes you all receive, which again, property taxes, sales taxes, hotel motel taxes, business taxes, et cetera. Expenses around 407 million, that's a, that's around a $69 million increase compared to FY '23. Public safety and public works expenditures represented the majority of the overall increase. But again, this resulted in an ending net position of around 618 million, and that's an increase of about $71 million for the year. So, again, all in all, a good year for the government from a, from a government-wide perspective. perspective. You know, again, while you had a corresponding increase in your expenses as it pertains to your revenues, you know, overall net position increased by about 13%. So, again, the government has a strong balance sheet. You all are in a good, liquid financial position, and again, overall, you're, you're, you're in a strong financial shape. The second component of your financial statements are the fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. This component focuses on individual parts of the government, and it reports your operations in more detail than that of the government-wide. And, you know, if I'm in your shoes, you know, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, it's the, the primary operating fund of the government. Again, it reports the, it's where the majority of your revenues are received and funds expended. But, you know, we have a chart on this slide that breaks out the general fund's revenues for the year. Again, this is just for the general fund, but total revenues around $254.4 million. That's around a $15.5 million increase compared to prior year. You know, like all governments, you know, obviously, the majority of your revenues are derived from taxes, which were just under $216 million for the year. You know, as I mentioned, the increase in taxes, you know, attributed to the majority of your overall increase in revenues. You know, to break down that a little further, property taxes were around $72 million, sales taxes were just under $100 million, and other taxes such as your occupational tax, your insurance premium tax, et cetera, were around $44 million for the year. You know, other significant items worth noting, charges for services around $20.3 million. You know, another item that contributed to the, to overall increase in, in revenue was your interest revenue. It more than doubled this year compared to prior year. It was around $2.5 million in FY23, and it was just under $6 million this year. So, this next chart breaks out the general fund's expenditures for the year by function. Total expenditures are around $232 million. That's around $22.7 million increase compared to prior year. You know, again, once again, no surprise, you know, the majority of your revenue, or I'm sorry, the majority of your expenditures were for public safety, which was around $132 million. That accounts for approximately 57% of the general fund's overall expenditures. And again, that's, that's right in, that percentage is right in line with what we've, what we've seen in prior years. You also had general government expenditures around $58.5 million, and public works expenditures around $23.8 million for the year. When you factor in other financing uses such as transfers to other funds, the general fund's fund balance decreased slightly by about $2.3 million for an ending balance of $133.1 million for the year. You know, this next chart, it, it shows the general fund's fund balance history over the past five years. These charts are always kind of interesting to reflect back on where you were compared to where things currently stand. And, you know, as you can see here, you know, even though fund balance decreased slightly this year, overall, you all have done a great job of increasing your fund balance over the past five years. It's increased about 60%, you know, over that period of time. And, you know, 2020 was obviously a unique year due to COVID, but with everything that's gone on over the past five years and the economic uncertainty that's followed it, it's impressive to see that you all have consistently been able to stay within budget and increase your fund balance. So again, that's something that council, management, and really everyone involved with the government should not only be, you know, should be proud of and commended for. And, you know, one thing I always like to point out, fund balance, you know, that's not what we all have in the form of cash, spend as you see fit. Fund balance is the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash. This slide kind of breaks down the general fund's fund balance a little, a little more. Again, total fund balance was a little over $133 million. Of that amount, around $63 million is classified as either non-spendable, committed, or assigned to future expenditures such as encumbrances, capital projects, capital projects, et cetera, with the remaining $70 million classified as unassigned that is, that is able to be used for, for general operations. Additionally, one thing to keep in mind, the general fund incurs expenditures around $19.3 million per month. So you all ended the year with an unassigned fund balance equal to approximately three and a half months' worth of, worth of operating expenditures. And again, with you all being a June 30 year in, that fund balance is very much needed to get you through the months of July, you know, July through October. And, you know, not to belabor the point, but a question I'm often asked is, you know, as long as we are able to pay our current obligations, you know, what's, what's the benefit of having a strong fund balance? And again, there, there are several reasons for this, one of which I, I just mentioned, you know, obviously, property taxes is a, is a significant revenue item for you all, and it's cyclical in nature. You know, so again, you all need that fund balance to, to get you through the months of July through October when your revenues are lower than they are at other times of the year. Other reasons, you know, to cover for significant, significant emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. It provides you all with the flexibility to fund discretionary spending. There's a potential for lower interest rates when you all go out in the market, which again would save you all money. And, you know, last but certainly not least, is definitely important in uncertain economic times. You know, again, that's certainly, that's certainly something we've all seen and been a part of. You know, from the financial crisis back in 2008 to the, to the global pandemic in 2020, to weather-related issues that we sometimes unfortunately have to deal with. You know, if I'm in your shoes, it's, it's good to see, you know, you all have a strong fund balance to withstand those, to withstand those events. So again, that's, that's certainly something you all should be proud of and, again, commended A few other funds I do want to briefly mention are the government's three enterprise funds, which again is your waste management, your civic center, and your transportation fund. Again, enterprise funds are, are used to account for operations similar to that of a private sector business. The goal of these funds, the intent of these funds are to be self-sufficient, meaning to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. And, you know, this chart breaks out all of the revenues and expenses for these funds as well as the, the change in net position. So, you know, we have separate columns here for your operating revenues, your operating expenses, your non-operating revenues, capital contributions, your transfers from other funds, and again, the resulting change in net position. And, you know, one thing worth noting on this slide, you know, operating expenses exceeded operating revenues in all three of these funds. For the waste management fund, this loss was offset by the significant amount of capital contributions you all received during the year, and, and those capital contributions are a little over $9 million. And again, that pertained to equipment that was purchased through the use of ARPA funds. But again, one thing to keep in mind, capital contributions, that's not a steady source of, of revenue, you know, it varies from year to year, especially as it pertains to these ARPA funds, which was a, a one-time revenue stream. So, again, while the waste management fund's net position increased during the year by approximately $2.8 million, you know, that's, that's essentially a result of these capital contributions. With regards to the other two funds, the civic centers fund had a decrease in net position of around $2.3 million, and the transportation fund had a decrease of just under half a million dollars for the year. So, you know, it, it's not a huge cause for concern at this point, but that's certainly something that I would recommend you all keep an eye on to, to make sure that that's not recurring theme in future years. But, because again, as I mentioned, the intent of these enterprise funds is to be self-sufficient and not to, not to have to rely on, on other funds for their revenue sources. One final item to discuss for you all, again, it's just general information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate. As I noted, again, you all are receiving a clean opinion with no audit findings. We received full cooperation from management and staff. There were no significant issues discussed with management that would have affected your financial statements. There were no uncorrecting statements, and again, we are independent of the government as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, let's see, by asking questions, that concludes my presentation. Again, there's a lot of information in this report. What I tried to do was just, you know, hit the highlights of what I think is of most importance to you all, but I, I do want to thank your staff again for all their hard work in this year. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Mr. Irwin, we appreciate your, your work on that. And I do want to recognize former Councilor Mike Baker, who is also a member of the Audit Committee. He's in the, in the room. Welcome, Councilor Baker. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Irwin for an exemplary report, an earned exemplary report by the Finance Department staff. And Mayor, typically, we would have the Finance Director to come and respond to any findings. But in this case, I'm pleased that there are no audit findings this year. And I know the Finance Director's here, and I'm going to ask, ask you to come around. And I, I don't know if any of your other staff are present. I see Karen. Karen is an accountant, and she is retired. Huge loss for us. But, David, I just want to recap because, see, this, this is the kind of news, won't make the six o'clock news. It will not make the six o'clock news, and so we have to toot our own horn when it's good news. But you said we have a clean, unmodified opinion, and I'm going to be using your words, the highest level of assurance. $35.5 million federal dollars, a clean, unmodified opinion on those federal dollars, the highest level of assurance. You said no audit findings this year, and you also said that management and staff should be proud. These are your words. I'm proud. You went on, Government Finance Office Association, GFOA, you pointed out a certificate of achievement for financial reporting 34 consecutive years. And in your words, you said another testament to CCG going above and beyond and willing to raise the bar. Your words. And then you talked about the financial statements. I, I don't, I didn't quite catch the note you said, one of the largest in Georgia, one of the largest in Georgia. But you pointed out that in the financial statements, government-wide combined into one or two columns, end-of-year assets, $1.4 billion. Liberties, $776 million. Revenues, $478 million. Expenses, $407 million. Ending net position, $618 million. You pointed out that we are, we're in a strong, liquid position, strong financial state. Overall, you said CCG has done a great job in increasing the fund balance over the last five years. You described it as impressive that we have been able to do this. In your words, impressive. CCG has a strong fund balance, and I'm excited today, and I wish that news like this would make six o'clock news. But since I know it won't make six o'clock news, I'm going to toot my horn, and I want Angelica to stand at the podium so I can say thank you and congratulations, Finance Director Angelica Alexander, to you and your team, job well done. I appreciate you. And so, with no findings, typically, you would respond to what we're going to do. You have any comments?
Not really. Thank you, Ms. City Manager, Mayor, Council for the support that you give to the Finance Department. Just thank you to all of the wonderful employees of the Finance Department. As the City Manager mentioned, our county manager here has been with the government 37 years, so 37 out of the 34, 34 out of the 37 years that she's been here, we've earned this award, and she is my employee that is retiring in a few months, and so we'll be hard-pressed to find a dedicated replacement that's dedicated to city government, dedicated to this city, but most importantly, dedicated to the finances of the government. So just thank you for all your support.
So how many total employees do you have in the whole department?
I think, well, including the positions that we were just recently allotted, I believe we have 42 positions on hold, we did that.
Okay. That's with the five that council was gracious enough, and thank you to the council for allowing you the five positions that you were awarded last week. And so, but I, I just didn't know if you had any comments. You and your team do an awesome job, and you oftentimes just don't get the credit. You get the credit for all the bad stuff, but for the good stuff, there's no credit in. One may say, why is he going on like this? You know, because I'm excited, because if it was one finding in this report, we would hear all the chatter. And I wonder how many of us are willing to give Angelica a hand clap of thanks for her job well done. She and her team. Thank you, Angelica.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding job, outstanding job. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Irwin, appreciate the presentation. We've already kind of had a, an update on this with the Audit Advisory Committee. Now, the City Manager making a good case to lower the millage again. I mean, that's what I've talked about in the past, so.
Wait, wait until you hear the rest of the meeting.
Well, look, we, we do do a good job. It's obvious and understanding. We do do a good job in the transactions for the last 30 years. Excellence, good, and as it relates to accounting for revenue and certainly money in the bank and as it's recorded in transactions, it's money going out of the bank. All that seems to be matching up in the report, and that's what, that's what an external report is all about. I wanted to bring this up to the Council Mayor. The, the Audit Committee, we got some really talented people. They, they are truly professionals. Counselor, former Counselor Mike Baker, he's on there. I guess he's gone, but we, we've, we've got one guy that was a former senior partner at Ernest Young that could probably work for any Fortune 500 company in this, this country at a, at a top level. He's that good. So, and they have been discussing routinely in the Audit Advisory Committee about the need for, we've never, we've never done, and you know this, and I want you to, to, you, you talked about it, Mr. Irwin, too, and, and in support about it. We've never, over this course of periods, we've never done a risk assessment. We've never done a risk assessment, and our committee members, the professionals, are advising us that we need to do that. We really need to do that. We need to do it now. They're going to make those recommendations. I'm just kind of bringing it out to the council here as a member on that committee. Counselor Tucker is also on that committee. The budget session's coming up. Those members are pushing really hard. It's been an advisement. I think the deputy city manager has sit in, and she's, she's heard those conversations as well. But I think that's probably the best step for us next as we move forward, and if you wanted to, to talk about that, because you've, you've sat on some of those conversations as well, you know, I'm, you know, you can look at that term, risk assessment, from many different angles, risk management of the whole government, but I, I think the best people to do it are people that practice in that area. But I think the best people to do it are people that practice in that area and understand it and relate to that. But I think that's what's being recommended to our Counsel, that we do the necessary funding and move forward with that and to get that on the books. So, thank you for the report. It's a good report. It's an excellent report. I do agree with you there. And we've got a lot of bright things in our government and our finances, the stability, financial stability of our government. We're blessed there, and that is something to be proud about. But it's, you know, it's a collective group of making decisions, financial decisions.
It's a team effort.
Within that structure. So, I think you're kind of saying y'all are working within that structure. You're doing a pretty good job of managing your revenue and expenditures.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Could we go back to the slide on the fund balance? I think that was it.
This one or?
The.
The history or the?
That one.
Okay.
So, the way I'm reading this is, we really, you know, your next slide talked about the importance of having a fund balance, you know, to, that, the green unassigned line is really what those items can be used for. This can be used for the items that you said we needed a fund balance for, because the red is already committed. The red, we can't use for emergency. We're already using it somewhere else. So, when I look at this slide, we're not, we shouldn't really be looking at the blue line as much as we're looking at the green line for emergency situations. Do you have a history of the green line? I mean, I see that you have a history of the blue line and how it's raised throughout the year. But I'd like to see the comparable of how the red line and the green line have raised or lowered over the years. Do you have that information?
I can formulate that information. Absolutely.
Because that's an important thing for us to look at.
And I think I remember last year during the presentation, you asked for a breakout, and that's actually why I created this slide, to kind of break out the total fund balance between what is unassigned and also the amount that's committed or assigned. So, yeah, I mean, that's certainly information that I could formulate.
Yes. Could you formulate that and get that to Counsel for me, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Just a general fund history similar to the previous slide, but just for the unassigned fund balance?
Well, the comparable, I want to see, you know, because I have a sneaky suspicion that when we're looking at the blue line, you know, the total, that the red has increased more than the green. And I'd like that proved, right or wrong? Because it's just, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes. Can you go to the enterprise fund? All right. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you for taking our advice and changing this, because the original one, it would have told, painted a different story. It would have painted us really being extremely healthy in regards to waste management, for the most part, waste management, but throughout, it would have made it look like we were in a healthy disposition when in actuality, we definitely, on the Civic Center side, if you explain that change in net position in reference to the health of that enterprise fund. So, we're in the, I would say, in the red on that. We kind of, we're losing?
Well, this year, you have a decrease in your net position in that fund, which is the gray bar. And again, the numbers, it's about $2.3 million decrease in net position for that Civic Center fund. And again, that's just, you know, it's as simple as your operating expenses are higher than your operating revenues. And it has no, is there any additional information? Okay.
Right. So, one of the things that was impactful for the Civic Center Fund for FY '24 was the approval of a lot of projects that were utilizing Friends of Columbus funds specifically for the Civic Center. We have to request reimbursement from the trust to reimburse the Civic Center for utilization of those funds. We are in the process of completing a drawdown for the Civic Center for utilization of those funds. I believe, year-to-date, we will be requesting about $2.7 million from the trust to reimburse the Civic Center for some of the expenses that they've incurred relative to operational improvements, capital, infrastructure improvements at the Civic Center that were previously expended.
All right. And the same for the transportation. I see it's in a, I guess you would say, negative. Is it some other funds that we're getting in reference to that?
Right. So, for transportation, the reason why it is not showing really a balance there between the operational expenses and operating revenues is because some of the funding that the Transportation Fund receives is not considered operational revenue. It's like the property tax revenue. It's not, it's non-operating revenue for that particular fund. So, that is a little different for the Transportation Fund.
And the main reason why I had asked, you know, that we changed the way this slide originally looked is because we, and I kept saying $3.50, but the Integrated Waste Fund, we went up $3. Was it?
I think it was $2.
Was it $2? I can't remem.
I think it was $3.
That's $3. Yeah, one, two, three. Yeah. So, yeah, we went up $3, but when we originally saw the slide when we had the meeting, it wasn't really capturing. It would look like the Integrated Waste Fund was extremely healthy, and we didn't need, you know, any help in that area. But you updating this and really painting a true picture of the health of the Enterprise Fund is really helpful. So, thank you for updating this slide.
Yeah. I mean, again, just really another benefit to the Audit Committee and why we have those meetings. You know, I had given them kind of a summary of what this presentation was going to be, and they had some suggestions. And one was this slide. The original slide netted all those revenues together. So, you had two columns, you had revenues and expenses, and they made a great point to their suggestion, "Let's break that out a little bit to give you a little bit better picture. What's your operating revenues? What's your operating expenses and then capital contributions?" Because, again, something like capital contributions, as I said, that's not a significant source of revenue. So, you know, for these funds to be self-sufficient, it paints a much better picture when you see the operating revenues as opposed to the operating expenses and then the other sources of revenue.
Yeah. And I also want to thank you for our conversation in reference to the presentation I end up sharing in reference to what you all did in Gwinnett County, the operational and performance assessment, and also setting us up with, you know, additional meetings so we can talk about that, as Counselor Davis mentioned, in reference to the risk assessment.
And that's something we're going to meet with you all about on March 5th at the Audit Committee meeting.
So, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager?
So, Mayor, just to the Finance Director, first clarification on Civic Center. So, what happens if we need a new ice floor, Zamboni or something, and we're going to get it from the Friends of Columbus? Then we expend those dollars, and then we get the money back from Friends, and that money goes back in. And that's what makes it look like, appear as a $2.3 million deficit.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and for those who don't know, the Friends of Columbus, there's a fund that has, for years, since dating back probably 1996, has a $3 million endowment. And when things are broken at the Civic Center, you can use the interest and not the principal and do capital upgrades, replace a floor, do things. And so, we'll do them, and then we get reimbursed from that interest out of the endowment that has been there for all these years. And so, I just want to be clear for citizens who are looking so that they don't think there's a $2.3 million deficit there. And then with Integrated Waste, we're going to, we've got some numbers for later on for the Integrated Waste that we won't talk about now, but, you know, we've had Abby from the consultant come in for years, and she would always come and put these big numbers out. In order for you to be a true enterprise fund and for the Integrated Waste Fund to break even, we were told that we need a $28 a month garbage rate, and then over a period of time, it gets up to over $30 rate. But we never did change the rate, even though we were given that information. We stayed at $14, and we, over a time period, we got up to $18, and last year, we went up three. With $3, it's still not enough to be an enterprise fund and self-sufficient, because we got closure of landfill, post-closure, and we've said over and over, we're going to leave it to our children and grandchildren to pay for those things. And so, we're going to have to talk about some things later on in the meeting with Integrated Waste. And then with transportation, I think you said $500,000. And so, at the public transit system, you know, through the chief plots and the special plot, purpose local option, they've got money. But anyway, just wanted to make those comments.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Irwin, thank you very much, sir. Doesn't appear to be any more questions. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we've got a presentation on the underserved and inmate healthcare program update. Bob Paskowski and Jane Jurzak. Hope I got the names right. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. It's good to see a lot of you again. Are we okay to start? Continue? Thank you for this morning for allotting some time to talk about the community care program. I'm Bob Paskowski, and I'm a consulting principal with PYA. And I'm joined, although not in the audience today, with Brian Fuller and Jane Jurzak. They're actually out. They just left to run some, we're doing some onsite visits and some discussions with some of the stakeholders, so they won't be here with me this morning. But just want to talk a little bit about the program, give an overview of the overall project, and spend most of our time talking about just an update on the project overall over the last several months. I was honored to come back to join at the kickoff back in September. Jane and I both came to that meeting to talk about how we were going to launch the program. So, this is an update over the last several months, that a lot of key work has gone into the overall program. Then we'll go through timeline and some milestones, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, the important thing is, we've been running the project is really to kind of keep everything framed up nicely. So, keeping these objectives front and center with us about identifying organizations that will serve as the network of providers. Again, that's one of the key program objectives. And assessing the impact, most of that relates to access to care, and then how we're going to pay for that, that network of providers, how it's going to be paid and how much it's going to get paid under the program. And then what's success look like over the next several years, and making sure we can track activity and some good reporting items that we can track the success of the program. And we've taken, make sure we define our terms, and we're very consistent using who the target population is, the medical services, how it's being funded, et cetera, throughout the project. And the other thing is, we've been out having many discussions with stakeholders, is to make sure we define the population, that it's these two populations of both the inmate and the indigent, which are defined populations, and what medical service will, medical services are provided underneath for those two populations, mostly on the medical side. So, again, those are important to Scott. We're getting a lot of questions, "How does this work?" And what's included, what's not included? But we've kept this front and center, make sure we frame this as we're having discussions with the key stakeholders. That's just our team. And the way we've been running the program to date has been, again, City Council is the ultimate decider here at the top. We've been working very close with the City Manager's office, Ms. Hodge, and others on her team, and running a lot of this through an advisory committee with Counselors Cole, Davis, and Tucker, as we're coming out with ideas to make sure we're getting alignment on our thoughts as we design the program. And then you can see there at the bottom, we've set up what we're calling work streams, where several of us have kind of broken out and to run each of those objectives that I had up on the slides earlier around the network, reimbursement, measuring effectiveness, and reserves. So, a couple of quick updates on the project itself. This is the program as it had been historically, you know, limited amount of families, limited primary care and behavioral health, and a lot more on the, I'll say, on the acute side with specialty care and hospital care. And that was the emphasis of starting, you know, this new program. As we've been talking to key stakeholders over the last several months, again, what we've heard pretty consistently is around the housing and some of the social determinants. While we hear those as important things to know, but as we, again, actually make the design of this program, those are things that may not flow through the program itself, but it's good to know that kind of background. And then we're also hearing under three and four about getting more providers into the program that have access, that can serve these populations, and increase the number of lives that are touched. Again, goals, we're just expanding the reach, expanding the network, expanding mental health. That's been a big emphasis over the last several months, and expanding the funding to more community providers.
Bob, I hate to interrupt, and I apologize. But if you could adjust the mic up a little bit and lean into that a little bit, some of the counselors are having terrible hearing.
Okay. Is that any better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Sorry about that. And the other thing we've heard quite a bit about is just integrating some current assets and things that are already in place with the 2-1-1 program. We've had the honor to speak about the new EMS program that Chief Scarpa is starting with, the Connect Care Program, and we spent some time with him yesterday. So, here's future state, again, starting with the amount of millage in the dollars at the beginning with that, setting up that pool, putting some of those dollars into an administration pool. And we'll describe each of these little pools first upcoming here, and then splitting it between the two different populations of both the inmates and the indigent, and then having the providers really on that right side of the page of serving the community in these populations through primary care, behavioral and mental health, et cetera. That's kind of the design of this. And one of the things we've been socializing a lot with our advisory group is really that center, the more of the hub and spoke, the center part of this is being the patient mental home, really emphasizing primary care, making sure that we get a lot of these people in the populations to get to their primary care as opposed to calling 911 and going directly to the hospital. So, there's a lot of emphasis about trying to get, that is the focal point. And then from there, services are rendered outside of that hub through these spokes of mental health, primary care, specialty care, et cetera. So, again, the emphasis will be to try to get them more panelized with their primary care physicians. So, a little bit about the fund distribution, as we kind of have it laid out now. Again, if you look at that prior slide, we have the dollars coming into the pool. One of the elements of this... One of the elements of disbursement would be under the program administration. And that would include a community care program coordinator or a project manager, really to kind of manage this large program. And that would be sourced by the city, in the city's office. But there would be services that would need to be provided outside of that through what we're calling a third-party administrative service that would help manage some of the simple billing processes and some reporting, could be care management as well. We were talking to Ms. Hodge last night about how care management can possibly be designed, the TPA could actually provide that as well. And are there opportunities to do some one-time investments for some primary care expansion? And we've always been bringing this up quite a bit is just, should we be withholding some of those dollars just for, as a reserve? In the prior presentation, you talked about having dollars about set aside for, we can't really estimate sometimes what the claims are gonna be. So would it be good to keep some dollars aside for, as there's fluctuations in the amount of healthcare that's consumed? So that would be the first cut. And then the dollars would be split into both the inmate pool and then the indigent pool, and then spread out between all the different providers and the community. And just from a timeline perspective, we're kind of rapidly going through this. We're nearing the conclusion of our design. It's looking like it'll come out probably by the end of the first quarter that we would present the design of this to city council for their recommendation, our recommendation and approval to start moving forward with a tentative launch date in July, by July 1st, and to start to actually implement the program. That's our timeline. I'll open it up for that. And again, I want to thank the city manager's office, Pam and her team, the counselors, as I mentioned before, giving their time up to make sure we're on the right path of how we're setting this up. We're feeling like it's getting some really good momentum. We feel like it's making good sense. And then we want to quickly then get council to think about now, how do we go from design to implementation, which would happen more in the second quarter of this year? So I'll pause there and answer any questions.
Counselor Grab.
Thank you. Can you go back to your very first slide, please?
Okay. In this, this.
Where you have identify. Yes. So under identify, you say identify a fair, diverse, and inclusive group of healthcare organizations located in or near the city of Columbus. Can you explain or near the city of Columbus? Because this is a Muskogee County tax situat, you know, collected. And so this, it's my opinion that we should focus on spending our money within Muskogee County and helping the citizens of Muskogee County. And I see where you are targeting, you know, citizens of Muskogee County, but that kind of jumped out at me.
That's a fair question. Actually, we took this straight out of the request for proposal. So I'm thinking with you that it's really Muskogee County. I just, we didn't rewrite it, just that's the way it was written in the proposal.
I'd like that to be corrected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just highlight again about the need, you're making the recommendation to the city, to the council, and executive management, the need for a administrator, a plan administrator here, fund administrator. I absolutely think that's a great idea, and it's the right structure to go with. But can you just highlight on that? Because, you know, this, you know, the complexity of it and the complexity of the request, how that individual is, that role is gonna be important.
Yeah, we would certainly work with you all. But it's somebody just, I'll use the analogy of like an air traffic controller, because there's gonna be so much activity between all the different providers, how the funding is working, working through city council. So I think when we were talking last night, we were really called more of a project manager. Who's gonna have the relationship with the third-party administrator? They're gonna have questions. How do we set this up? And you won't have somebody on the ground running all that air traffic and trying to keep the program working. As the reports come out and we start to look at success, like how many families did we serve? What are the, how are the dollars? All those things would be, have to be kind of tracked through this project manager. It's a big role. We shared a little bit last night. It'd be something that probably makes sense that you start thinking about pretty quickly if you're thinking July 1 is sort of your target date to launch this. Very important position.
Well, and Bob, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I do, when we originally started down this path, I didn't expect that. But when the firm brought it back to us and said, you know, you really need to, you need this position, you really need to consider it, I started realizing that you're spot on. You're exactly right. It's a very complex matter. There gonna be a lot of requests. And all you just gotta make sure which ones are valid, which ones are not, and, you know, be able to manage that. And it's somewhat, I guess it's somewhat like we have a little different area, but we have a director that's over the crime prevention grants and things like that, where they manage those type funds. This is a little more direct, focused, skilled in that area. You would have to get somebody knowledgeable in the healthcare arena to be able to do that. So thank you for sharing it.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you so much for the update. All right, next, an update from Columbus Police Department. Chief Stony Matthews, chief.
Mayor, council. First, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to present this morning. And I basically come with two asks. But before I get into my ask, I would like to take the opportunity to kind of brief you on the update of the police department and kind of brag on my personnel. The police department right now is working on all four cylinders. My command staff is working very closely together. Debbie Kennedy, my assistant chief, has spent a lot of time working on the Paul's contract. And also, she's working on the police foundation. With everything else that she's working on, she's also working on those two very important items. Assistant Chief Den Fitzpatrick, with everything that she's working on within the police department, she's also formulating us an annual report. Believe it or not, when I came, I looked at about the last five-year annual reports, and they were carbon copies of each year, down to even the pictures from five, six years ago. So we're gonna update that. We're gonna give you a product that's up to date with personnel that we have in the organization today. Also, still today, suicide is one of the leading causes of death for police officers. So Den Fitzpatrick works on the mental health of our employees. So, and then additionally, with my other command staff, my deputy chiefs, I got Lance Deaton and his team solving crime, probably outdoing some of the national average by double. Robert Graham is collecting all this data for me. And our uniform patrol is operating at the highest level they've operated since I've been here. I've been with the police department now about 20 months. Over that 20 months, I came in front of you at the very beginning, and I said I was gonna hire 100 police officers in a year. We accomplished that. I said I was going to start a gang unit. We accomplished that. I said that I was going to start a tactical unit. We accomplished that. Also said I was gonna put together a community policing unit to build that relationship with the community. We accomplished that. I did tell you that I was gonna reduce the crime rate by 25%. That I did not accomplish. It, a little frustrating. I come up with these initiatives to do that, and we did not accomplish it. But I would like to point out some of the numbers we did accomplish. From 2023 to 2024, we reduced the homicide or other murder rate by 22%. We reduced the robbery rate by 29%. We reduced aggravated assaults by 12%. We reduced burglary by 22%. We reduced auto theft by 17%. All those numbers were reduced by double digits except for one, and it was larceny. And larceny is petty theft, shoplifting, bad checks, and breaking into cars. Of course, I did put some initiatives into attacking the car break-ins we have in the community. And my command staff people, they're way smarter than me, put these initiatives into play. And we had a significant reduction, but it still didn't meet the 25%. But we're not gonna stop. We're gonna continue. Because these numbers, and now this is just February of 2024, I mean, January of 2024 compared to January of 2025, the murder rate's down 75% compared to those two months. Robbery's down 32% compared to those two months. Burglary's down 32%. Motor vehicle theft is down 27%. And larceny itself is down 33%. Those numbers are some of the best numbers that I've seen in my 32 years of law enforcement. And of course, it is not the chief. I can come up here and tell you I'm gonna do these things, but it's not me the one actually doing them. It's the troops that I have on the ground. And when I came here and I said I was gonna hire 100 police officers, one of the news outlets asked me, well, chief, how you gonna do that? I said, I'm gonna make the job as a Columbus police officer so enticing that we're gonna have people standing in line to be a police officer. And I submit to you, today, we're completely full. Actually, we have four openings, but we already have people slated for them. But we have people standing in line to be Columbus police officers. When I came, we were half-staffed with dispatchers. Today, we have a waiting list of individuals that want to be dispatchers for the Columbus Police Department. Our clearance rate for the homicides that we do have is 87%. So you have, if you commit a murder in the city of Columbus, you got 13% chance of getting away with it, which is not good for them, but it's good for us. And I equate a lot of this to our technology advancements that we've had over the last two years. If you've not been down to the Real-Time Crime Center, I ask that you come down there and check that out. Over the last two years, we put this Real-Time Crime Center in play where we can solve crime within hours. And we've done that. But we're not stopping there. There are some other technology advancements that we're looking at, and it's a drone project, where we'll have a drone on top of the police department that goes 100 feet into the air and goes 55 miles an hour. It can get to calls, serious calls, way faster than a police officer can. So the police officer can actually pull on his phone what's going on at the scene before he ever arrives. Those are the technology advancements that the Columbus Police Department are looking at. And how, and then you ask, but how do you make it so enticing, chief, that people are standing in line to become police officers? That all comes down to leadership. And when I came to the Columbus Police Department, I'd done a SWAT analysis, and I think I even came in front of council and said that it was a leadership problem within the police department. 20 months later, I'm here to tell you it's not a leadership problem within the Columbus Police Department, because you have some very dynamic and experienced leaders. What it was, it's called fragmented leadership. You have multiple leaders going in different directions. Alls they needed was someone to come in with a little vision. They're the ones making it happen. I just give them the vision, and they take the ball and run with it. So I apologize early on that I said it was a leadership problem, because it's not a problem. Just needed some vision. And there's a, a lot of people think that becoming a chief is you have all this authority, very little authority. It's a lot of responsibility. And what I try to do is share that responsibility with my assistant chiefs and my deputy chiefs, because that's how you get everybody on the same page. There's a book called Good to Great. If you've never read it, it's a good book. And it talks about all the things I just told you the police department's doing. We're good. The city is doing some good things. But the book talks about oftentimes we allow good to get in the way of being great. And I think some of the things we do at the police department, we're satisfied and we're okay with being good. That's not how my personality works. So we're gonna make the adjustments to where we can be great, because I'm not gonna be satisfied until we get to the point that we're doing great things. One of the leaders, Simon Saneck, said this. Leadership is not about being in charge. It's about taking care of those that you have charge of. And that's my job. So what I'm here today to ask you, one of them is a no-brainer, and I want to explain to you why I want to do it. One is I would like your approval to start a non-paid reserve unit, kind of like an auxiliary police unit. And the reason I'd like to do that is because I have a lot of retired police officers in our community that have approached me wanting to give back to the community, but they don't necessarily want to have a mandated set of hours that they have to work. And this is a budget-neutral request, because they're gonna purchase their own uniforms, their own firearms. The only thing that the city is gonna provide is they're gonna be mandated to go through the same training, and we're gonna hold them to the same standard as we hold every other police officer to. They're not gonna be driving around in your police cars answering calls. What we've assigned them to is working some parades. We'll have them working down at the river and the music festival in Uptown. And they're willing to do this for free. And where I come from, at Henry County, that's how the reserve unit worked. And I've been approached, and they want to do this. And this is just another step of us securing the areas in the city that are vulnerable. My next request is this. In 2012, you guys had 388 police officers. Today, I have 381. I'm asking you to unfreeze seven more positions so I can get up to that 188. The mayor and I have had a conversation, and I think he's in agreeance with that. But here's the problem that I got. If we wait through this budget year and do it in July, the next academy is July 7th. After that, the next academy is January the 7th. So if I can do it sooner than later and get these seven people in the July academy, they're worth more to me next year opposed to waiting till July, I mean, January of next year. I know you guys just unfroze 10 last summer. Immediately, we'd fill those 10 positions. So I'm asking to unfreeze seven more positions to get to that same number that you were at in 2012. You remember I told you that 400 is the number? With the technology advance we have had, at some point, we get to 400. That's the number that the Columbus Police Department will, and that's gonna take a little time. But that's where we'll make some serious impact. We're doing good. But I'm not gonna let good get in the way of being great.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the request from the police chief. Counselor Tucker, is it to the motion?
No.
Mayor Protem to the motion?
No, sir.
All right. All those in favor, please stay out.
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right, that's carried. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you, chief.
Um, yes, thank you, chief. Um, you know, Chairwoman Carlotta Harrow, she speaks highly of you up in Henry County. We've, actually, we've both just been nominated to serve on the NACOS Board of Directors. I appreciate you and, and that's, I appreciate her because she's that type of leader that will talk about her deficiencies and also, you know, the things that she does well. And I appreciate you for coming and, and saying that, no, you didn't make the 25%. However, these were the measures that you took and the benchmarks that you made. That takes a great person with great character to really talk about exactly some of your pitfalls, but also your successes. You didn't just capitalize on all the successes. So I just want to thank you for, for mentioning that. And that was one of the things, you know, that I've asked is that you come or someone or Graham, you know, comes and provide that information to our citizens. Because for the most part, people are just guessing based on what they hear or what they see, not what they know. And what you're doing is providing the facts. And one of the things, one of my good friends always say, trust but verify. And, and yes, we trust, but you just provided the verification. So thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to seeing this non-paid unit, um, reserve unit. I think that's amazing. I know it's a lot, it's a lot of people that want to be an asset even after they take the uniform off. I got this person over here next to me. But, um, but seriously, thank you. I appreciate you. Appreciate you. I'm looking forward. And you got people actually sending me texts, Mr. Salma, can they, can they get a job? And they, they, they work for the city. People are watching. People are watching what you're doing, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councillor Hickey?
Chief Mathis, I'd just like to echo what my colleague councillor Tucker just said. And me and you, we have had several conversations since you've been on board. And I can't thank you enough for, uh, where you've helped brought the department to. Growing up in the Columbus Police Department, come there at the age of 20 years old. And, uh, after 30 years, three months and four days coming out. I look back and think about my own career and where, where I was when I first came in as a youngster and, and grew up there. My wife came on board down there. She's still there with the department now. And, uh, the Columbus Police Department have always had a special place in my heart, always. Because I know the importance of what public safety does, law enforcement. I know the importance of that. I know without it, we don't function properly as a, as a community. So I just want to say thank you again. And on my wife's behalf, thank you for the phone call. Don't mean to get emotional, but in the passing of my mother-in-law. That phone call to my mo, to my wife meant a lot. So it speaks a lot about your character. So thank you very much for that phone call.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councillor Davis?
Chief, I applaud the men and women of CPD, our first responders. That was really one good report.
Thank you, sir.
It makes me proud. We should be proud. You've got the support of the citizens of Columbus. You've got the support of this council. You've got the support of leadership. That's something really to celebrate about.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I haven't seen numbers like that in a long time. But that's what our citizens were asking for. You delivered. The leadership's there. That's just one heck of a report. And I applaud the men and women of CPD for all their hard work and efforts. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councillor Kogel?
Thank you, chief. That was, uh, impressive, impressive numbers once again. Um, I, I'm doing a little math and if you're going to be at, uh, 200 and, or 388 pretty quick. I think you're giving, you're underselling yourself a little that we're 12 away from that magical 400 mark. So, um, I'm looking forward to approving 12 more fairly shortly. So, um, great work and love seeing, love seeing the blue and white cars out there. So thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, chief. By my count, the vote was unanimous on thawing the seven positions. But we will still need a budget amendment to ratify that. We'll get with the finance director on, uh, doing that when it's convenient by ordinance. And, uh, on the reserve program, we may need some waiver forms signed by
Yes, sir.
Reserve deputies, but that won't cost any money. No budget amendment on that.
Thank you.
Councillor Hough?
Thank you, chief. A good report. Uh, you piqued my curiosity. Could you kind of touch base on the drone you mentioned, how it works?
Yes, sir. They came and done a demonstration for us and it's, it's controlled by the people in the, in the, um, Real Time Crime Center. They're watching everything on screen. It's stationed, it's housed, uh, on the roof of the police department. And it will immediately get dispatched to the coordinates that they put in the, um, in the, in the computer. And then it goes straight there. It hovers up and actually, we've seen the demonstration. You can see real live time of what's going on at the scene within just a couple of minutes.
How close are we?
Uh, it's just, um, I'm going to put that in this year's budget and I'm going to be able to explain why we need it. And also the fire department will be able to utilize the same equipment. If they get a structured fire, it can be there and let the fire department know what's going on prior to their arrival.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And councillor Hough? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right. Doesn't appear to be any more, any more questions, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, we want to thank him for his patience. Uh, the chairman of the Development Authority of Columbus has got an update for us, Selvin Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, thanks for waiting.
Thank you all, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, councillors. Thank you all for your time. Um, I really appreciate it. I think the last time I came this summer, uh, my report was rather anemic. Uh, we've had some great progress since, uh, the end of November. As a development authority, we've closed, uh, three deals worth about 120 million in, um, projected, uh, um, investment in the city and about 300 new jobs. One of those, uh, will include a company, a biotech company that we managed to keep here, keep 400 jobs. And we'll probably add another 200. So, and that was just in the last two months of this year. I'm real proud of the work that the staff and, uh, the, everybody's done. Uh, I, I don't know if you know, uh, there've been a couple of reports at CSU and wherever. We are pretty low. We're last in the state in our region in economic development right now. So this is, this was a lot of work. We, the people at the, uh, the staff at the Development Authority have put in a lot of good work. We cleared out some parcels and, uh, I think our trajectory is on a good path right now. Uh, we had a visit, uh, last week from a company, um, Southeast Asia, I guess, as best as close as I can put it. It was a last minute Georgia power. They came in, we took them to, uh, cleared sites that we already have. And they were very, very pleased with what they saw. Uh, we're the finalist and I'm, whether we get this or not, I've not been able to say that we've been a finalist in anything. It's large. But an automotive, uh, an automotive company, uh, has us as a, we're certainly final in the state of Georgia. But it will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 240 million in investments and, uh, 500 jobs should we get it. Now, whether we get it to me right now, it'd be great, but we've not been a finalist in anything like that in years. And I've been on the Development Authority for quite some time. So I do think with, with y'all's collective help, with a lot of subtle changes we've had to make, I do feel like we're on a, a good path forward. One of another things that I didn't think I'd have to announce, we did, it's bittersweet. We did lose our Director of Economic Development. Her last day will be, uh, tomorrow, I think. We've not been in a position that we've even been competitive in the state. So I, I hate losing a position. But the fact that someone came and swooped up, someone that's done a great job for us is another sign to me that, uh, we are headed in the right direction. I appreciate, I've talked with several of you individually and I do appreciate that support along the way. We are in a bit of a transition right now. I think all of you know that we are in the process of looking for a new president, CEO of the chamber, which really, that's on the chamber side. And, and I'm looking for an executive director as well on the, um, DA side. But all in all, I feel like a good end of the year report. And I do feel like the activity we have in place right now headed into 2025 is, uh, is, is more positive than I've seen. I mean, you were on the board for a while and, uh, I think you'd appreciate, uh, we've had some very healthy executive sessions in the past. They've not been healthy and vibrant. And we've got people that are really invested in the community that, that, uh, uh, really express their thoughts. So I'm real pleased with where we are right now. Any, any questions, uh, about anything specific to the Development Authority or any other projects?
Councillor Chambers?
First of all, let me say thank you for coming, uh, Selvin, Mr. Hollingsworth. I've had an opportunity to serve up under your leadership and, um, I think, um, the Development Authority is invaluable, um, to the community. One question is how many, um, how many, um, I know when we attract businesses, they're looking for a place. I mean, and I know we have land. I don't take knowledge apart way, but
Yes.
How many available spaces do we have that's ready to go?
That's a great question. Great. Um, in the past, we've not really had anything. We've got four right now. And, and what I, what you have to realize, I didn't realize it, when other companies come here to look at, uh, different parcels, they have to be cleared and leveled out. Uh, you could do drone technology and show them things. You can do, uh, virtual sessions where, uh, you've cleared everything out virtually. But we do have four cleared sections, parcel 17 specifically is 236 acres. And we did take a huge prospect out there a few months ago. And I will tell you, when people come to town and look at these, they don't just stand on the road. They go out and look. We had a prospect in from Southeast Asia last Wednesday. They wanted to see parcel seven, which I think is 36 acres. They walked the entire, with all the mud and everything, they walked the entire parcel. And it's very important. And that's an upfront investment. You, you, we're spending several million dollars on the hope that someone will come. But it is, it is from, the state has told me there are two things we need to have in place. Number one is, uh, cleared, cleared land. And number two is, uh, good folks working that. And that, great question, that cleared land is, we have it now. Two, 34 at one point, another 200 next to the landfill. And then 36 for sure, uh, back from the old Pratt Whitney spot. So thank you. Any other questions?
Councillor Hickey?
Mr. Hollingsworth, uh, you and I, we go way back.
Don't talk about that, but yeah.
I mean, all the way back to when your dad used to coach us
Yeah.
in, in, in Little League baseball.
Yeah.
And, uh, you've always been a great friend. And I just wanted to chime in and tell you that, uh, how much I appreciate your leadership in, in the role that you're in. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. But I also, I look around at all you all and I, you know, we've got stories that go back, you know? And I appreciate all your work. Uh, I'm not going to talk about somebody and what he did at UGA and, uh, in a batting cage. But, uh, I, I, I really respect the work that you all do. I know it's not easy. I, I get it now. People call and stop you for no reason whatsoever. I, I get it. And I've got an even healthier appreciation for what you all do, what you do as well. And thank y'all for what you do. Uh, we, we, like I said, we've had some challenges. We've had some staffing challenges. But the state of Georgia, uh, had an opportunity to go to, uh, Las Vegas during the snow week. And it was for what's called the SHOT Show. It's the largest, uh, gun show in the world. And my only role there was to go represent Columbus and to potentially talk with arms dealers about the potential of Fort Moore. Uh, I had an opportunity to talk with every person at a state level in economic development, and they like what we're doing now. They characterized us as being a little bit lost in years past, but they do like where we are today. The unity we have, the one voice talking to economic development at a state level. So I, I am really optimistic about where we are right now.
Councillor Hough?
Good morning, Mr. Hollingsworth. We all go back a ways.
Like, like I said, we're, we're in public.
Yeah. Thank you for the, uh, report. My question, uh, is regarding, you mentioned, uh, auto.
Automotive.
Industry type automotive deal. Uh, is that, would that be tied to anything that's up and down? 85 now as far as suppliers that are tied. I know you may not be able to say, but is it something similar?
We go way back, so.
Okay. Okay, okay.
And y'all, and, and I don't, I don't mean to be crass, but we did have one situation in another community where someone mentioned something too fast and it went away. What I'm waiting on now is the approval from three of our people that have chosen us, but they've got a lot of internal work. They've got to go back and tell people in other states. And we're not going to be here. We're not, might be moving. So, um, and I don't want us to get burned on anything.
Oh, yeah. I'm not looking for a name. I was just wondering if, you know, 85, 85, 85 blew up going from La Grange into Alabama with a lot of tight industries. I was just wondering if it was something similar, so.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's why these updates are so difficult because they're the, uh, NDOs they've signed. And, and, and you're right, it doesn't matter if you're the top choice.
Yeah.
If word gets out before they're ready, you're gone.
We, we have a, you know, we take a lot of things for granted here. The group that came from Southeast Asia last week. One of the final things I did, I did ask them, we were at lunch and they're about to head back to Atlanta. They ask, uh, I asked them about golf, what it's like to play golf in your country. And they said, well, you, it's a two-hour drive. The round is about five hours and there's a two-hour drive back. And you have to have tee times about 30 days in advance. And we were at the NDO and I said, hey, you're not going to believe this. You got five minutes, six minutes. Come with me. And they all hopped in their van. And I said, I know a place where you don't have to have tee times. Sign-up time, I think is, you, you might have the initiation fee maybe $3,000. They couldn't believe that. And monthly, maybe 500, but there are no tee times. And they couldn't believe it. I said, I'm not joking. And I said, we drove up to this course on a hill on Cherokee Avenue. There was nobody playing and they could not believe it. They absolutely couldn't believe it. So those are the little subtle things that about our city that are, they had no earthly idea that you could same day, go play golf, go back home, see your kids. Just nothing they'd heard of. Uh, we did send them some nice souvenirs. So it's, we've got a great city and a great story. It's just a matter of being able to tell it.
Thank you, sir.
Councillor Davis?
Selvin, you're not going to talk about those days, but I will. Two young ball players trying to make a team.
I got cut. You didn't. Uh, you went on to the pros. I just.
Two young ball players trying to make a team, doing the necessary work to make it happen.
Yeah.
You and I hit it off really good. Don't ask me why. It's a small world, but you and I hit it off
We did.
Really good. You became my friend. You're still my friend. You haven't changed a bit. You still look like that same young ball player I saw on the field that day.
But I got cut. It's a horrible feeling.
You had a good arm. But that was a good time, and you know, that's what I cherish and relish about the game. Baseball is that you make lifelong friends, and I appreciate that. Good to see you, buddy.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
So thank you for the update and the walk down memory lane and all that stuff.
I forgot how much history I had, so I'm headed on. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Solomon, you've been waiting a while for the talk about Accountability Courts. You want to come on up?
Good morning, Council, Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for having me here this morning. It's been a long time. I was encouraged by a member of our Community Advisory Board that first scolded, then encouraged, that I don't do a good enough job of getting the word out about all the great works that my department does, and was encouraged to come and make sure that I do a better job of getting in public and letting everyone know the great things that are happening with Accountability Courts in Columbus. So when I started in 2013 with the City of Columbus, I was hired as the Coordinator for the Adult Drug Court. It was myself, two employees, and $182,000 a year. This is our department today. We've grown, just a little. I know it's a little hard to read, because it's hard to get it all on one slide. As of last year, when I was given the title of Director of Accountability Courts, I now serve all three of our Accountability Court Judges. Judge Godfrey has the Adult Drug Court, Judge Martin, the Mental Health Court, and Judge Richardson, the Veterans Treatment Court. We have, under my supervision, a surveillance team led by Captain Cedric Holton of the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Calvin Kirksey, who's here today, is the Coordinator for our Veterans Treatment Court. Mr. Todd Wilson, who's here today, is our Treatment Coordinator. Mr. Cliff Stokes, who's also here today, is our Adult Drug Court Coordinator. And since restarting Mental Health Court last year, I still serve in that role personally to ensure that we got that court up and running in accordance with state standards. We have our own drug testing lab. We have Dr. Barry Pointer here with us today, who runs the Porch Project for us, and then Dr. Andrew Cox serves as our Program Evaluator and Clinical Supervisor. As I said, we have three Superior Court Judges who volunteered to take on this role as heading up an Accountability Court and Accountability Court Team. It's a big ask for any Superior Court Judge. Not only do they have their normal dockets and all of the duties that come with their office, they volunteer to take on this extra duty. It's time out of their day to do meetings with the staff, it's time out for court either weekly or biweekly, it's time out to attend conferences and trainings to stay up to date on everything we have to know. So it's a big ask, and we are really, really fortunate to have such great judges to volunteer in these positions. For those of you who are not familiar with Accountability Courts, it may be a foreign term. So I want you to take every episode you've ever watched of Law &amp; Order and throw it out. Everything you know about a traditional courtroom, throw it out. Accountability Courts are something different, and they're amazing. With Accountability Courts, what we do is we create a team. Each team is led by a judge. They have a coordinator, at least one case manager. They have treatment professionals. There is an ADA that sits on every one of our teams. There is a defense attorney that sits on every one of our teams. We have the surveillance team, the probation office, all in one room. And after a person comes into an Accountability Court, either weekly or biweekly, that team meets, and that team discusses every person in that program. What are their treatment needs? What is their home life like? What are the barriers to getting them the treatment? Are they working? Why? Why not? Are they in compliance with their treatment? Do they have a substance use disorder, a mental health disorder? Are they getting in trouble? Why? What can we do to change it? And that group of professionals works tirelessly to try to create those behavior changes that keep people out of our jails. Each program is a minimum of 18 months. Each one is a five-phase program. Compliance with the model is what dictates their movement through the five phases. As I said, it's led by the team of professionals. We have status conferences, we have, Columbus is so honored, and I'll get to it later again, but we have our own in-house treatment team through the use of funding and resources. We have a team of licensed clinicians that work in the Government Center that help to facilitate all this and make sure people get the care they need. Our target population is anyone 18 to 65, charged with one or more criminal offenses or probation violation that are motivated by an untreated or undiagnosed substance use disorder or mental illness. They must show a willing, it's a voluntary program, they have to volunteer in. We do tell people, I'll be transparent, it's Hotel California. You can volunteer in and volunteer out. But they have to show a willingness to live a drug-free lifestyle and a desire to do it. Does that can go backwards? No. We talked about who all sits on the Drug Court or on each of the teams. We're very fortunate that each of the offices involved sends a representative to serve on these teams. These team members who serve on each of these teams, we take to annual trainings, we make sure they are specifically trained and that they have the information necessary to fulfill their role on that team. They are each considered an expert in their field. One of our proudest team members is that they see the word peer. For all of you that sit on the felony review hiring board, thank you for always indulging me. We do have peers. We have graduates who have come back to work for our program. And so it's really exciting that can become certified in the state of Georgia, has a certified peer specialist credential that each of those people can go receive. Even bigger than that, I will tell you, I will boast from the hills, the new State Director of the Georgia Mental Health Consumer Network is a Muskogee County Drug Court graduate. Treatment, like I said, we have our own in-house treatment team, we have licensed physicians, we have Spanish-speaking physicians, and we have veterans. One of our biggest boasts with our Veterans Treatment Court grant, our federal grant, they've started sending us to speak other places and to speak with other courts, is our veterans treating veterans. We have three wartime veterans who are also licensed clinicians who work in the Government Center, and they work directly with our wartime veterans in Veterans Treatment Court. Our veterans have the continuity of care that some have complained they don't find other places where they get to see the same person every time they come in and get to move through their treatment plan. We hold groups at the Government Center, we do individual therapy at the Government Center. No one is charged for those services. They don't need insurance to come see us. When a person graduates from our program, we tell them, once a member of the family, always a member of the family. We have graduates who come back and see us. We also work with New Horizons. Through our federal grant, we have 16 beds at Journey to Recovery, so we have our own 16 dedicated beds at a semi-independent residential facility. So people coming out of jail who would otherwise be homeless or meet the clinical criteria for residential care were able to place there. We also work with American Works, and then another big cell for us is Dr. Andrew Cox. I could tell you all of his licenses and certifications, or you can see them. It's just the alphabet, the entire alphabet he has. We are so blessed that he chooses to work with us. He's been with us for about 10 years now, working alongside me with the Accountability Courts and making sure we have everything we need. He and I will be speaking directly at the Council of Accountability Court Judges, which is our state governing body, will be speaking at their conference this year in September, and he and I will be presenting our graduate internship program. This program has been in existence for about 10 years. We specifically work with Troy State, with Columbus State, and then we get numerous interns from online universities. We get a lot of military spouses going through the online universities that come to us. Dr. Cox is specifically and especially uniquely situated because he is able to supervise clinically both those seeking LPC status licensed professional counselor or social work, because he is both an LPC and an LCSW. So we can take social work students or clinical mental health students. We usually take between five and six a year. What that means for us is, these are graduate students, not undergrad students. Graduate students seeking their masters in social work or clinical mental health, they come to us, they do their practicum and their internship with us, which means we have them for a year apiece, and we get between 20 and 30 hours of work a week out of each of them. For free. It's beautiful. What it also does is it creates an employment pipeline. Over the last 10 years, we have hired at least 15 of our interns into the department. They spend a year with me, they already know how to use the case management system, they understand how the teams work, they understand the job, they understand the whole entire program, so we hire them. It's a very smooth transition. Again, one of our proudest boasts, Mr. Todd Wilson, LPC, sitting right here, and my Treatment Coordinator started with us in 2019 as an intern, after retiring from the military. Everybody likes numbers. So let's talk community value. The current, the community value is, our case management system, Estimated Community Value Engine combines real-time data entered into the case management system and historical data with current figures published by the Federal Register, National Institute of Justice, Kaiser Family Foundation, the Independent Sector, and all relevant public acts and codes. When it breaks down what we put in the case management system, the Estimated Community Value is done against the incarceration cost, compares the court's program cost with the cost of traditional incarceration. The last number I have from Muskogee County is it's roughly $50 a day to house an inmate, that is without medical or mental health needs. Most everyone in an accountability has won both or all. When you start to accumulate those special needs on top of that $50 a day, it will get really expensive. It costs $15 a day to put a person in an Accountability Court. So there's a lot of community savings in how we're able to get people out of jail and into the community setting and into treatment. Under the state best standards, we are to strive to, from referral to entry into treatment should be 50 days or less. So that is a goal of ours, that is part of the reason we brought the in-house treatment team in to help expedite that process so we can move people through the system quickly. The program benefits include, but are not limited to, the value of community service hours sanctioned and the state income tax collected according to the client's level of income. The community savings include, but are not limited to, the avoided cost of foster care, recidivism, and healthcare. So this is the Adult Drug Court, Estimated Community Value based on the current 88 participants in the program. Obviously, you can see it's about 1.9. Mental Health Court only started in October of 2024, so we've been in operation with the new program for about a year, and the Estimated Community Value for the Mental Health Court is about $240,000. And then the Veterans Treatment Court, the Estimated Community Value is about $413,000. Mental Health Court and Veterans Treatment Court currently only have about 19 participants apiece. Mental Health Court's capacity is 20 participants, based on manpower right now. Our state grant is due at the end of this month, and I will be requesting another position for the Mental Health Court so that we can expand that. When we started Mental Health Court in October 24, October 23, excuse me, October 23, we didn't anticipate how quickly it would grow, and we reached capacity in about six months. Funding sources, currently, we have the City of Columbus, thank you very much, especially for my job. The Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the CJCC, that's where our state grants are run through, through the Council of Accountability Court Judges, which is our annual funding from the state. As Mr. Mayor pointed out to me earlier, I really like to write federal grants. So we had one end December 30 of 2024. We still currently have two same-sex grants running. The Veterans Treatment Court has a $2 million same-sex grant, and then we also have the Porch Project, which is housed in my department, that is also another $2 million same-sex grant. And then this year, working with Ms. Alexander, we have the Bern Jagg Grant. And currently, our quest with the Bern Jagg Grant has been singular in trying to get a vehicle so that we can transport individuals to residential care without having to use the resources of the jail or the Sheriff's Department. We can hire off-duty deputies with a vehicle of our own, and we can get people transported out of the jail and where they need to go. Another big thing we're doing right now is called Traumnon. Ms. Strode had Tabitha Moss, our peer, on her show recently to talk about the new 12-step group that we've brought to Columbus. Traumnon, as you can see, is a 12-step support group. It's focused on healing those with trauma. We know that a lot of people with substance use disorders, that their illness started from an untreated trauma, whether suffered during childhood or adulthood. Traumnon began at the Savannah Trauma Institute. Columbus is the first satellite location. We are the first, they've come to train. We've already had two trainings. We had the first one, the Traumnon, people came and trained, just my staff and a few of our graduates who wanted to be involved. And last week, we had over 15 people just from the community that wanted to get involved, so they came and joined the staff for another training so that we can really try to get Traumnon spread all throughout Columbus, much like AACA and ANCR. But this will just be a new meeting that people can attend to hopefully get the help they need and heal. Our community partners are amazing, and we could do nothing without them, absolutely nothing. We just named a few here, New Horizons, American Works, Safe House, Home for Good, Ms. Gloria Strode, True Springs, which is, those in the audience want to give them a shout out. The Fort Church hosts all of our Traumnon meetings, and then we work with a lot of different local churches and missions. True Springs in particular is helping us out next weekend, on February 21st, we'll be hosting the Recovery Ball. My peers started this a couple of years ago because we had some graduates let us know that they missed most all of high school based on their addiction, and we realized that meant a lot of them had never had a prom, and it made them very sad. So we started the Recovery Ball, and Ms. Tabitha Moss has been collecting donations of suits and dresses. We've learned over the years, the first year we just did the dresses, and then we felt really bad the night of the ball because a lot of the men complained because they didn't feel like they had the correct attire. So we made sure we expanded that, and we've been collecting suits and sports coats. We have people who have dedicated their time to do hair, makeup, and nails for all of our ladies. We're going to have some tie tires for all of my men. And it'll be held at True Springs next weekend, so we're really excited that everyone is going to get to get dressed up and have a night to celebrate their recovery. I don't have any slides about it, and thank goodness he's here, because I forgot to put it in, but we do, like I mentioned, have the Porch Project housed in my department as well. The Porch Project, if you don't know, is providing overdose reversal to give Columbus hope. Columbus had one of the highest overdose rates in the state of Georgia when we wrote the grant. We're really excited. We blew every objective we had out of the water in year one. I'm not sure where we're going to go in year two. We're extremely fortunate that Dr. Barry Pointer agreed to come on board and serve as the Coordinator of that project. Not sure why or how we got him, but he is such an asset to the city and such an asset to this program. Last year alone, the Porch Project passed out more than 4,000 vials of Narcan. We have outfitted every law enforcement agency in our area, we have outfitted every jail and prison in our area, we have outfitted every school, every SRO, we have outfitted the AED boxes all throughout the city. There is no excuse for anyone to die of an overdose. We should all have it and be aware. We are thankful for the police officers and all the first responders who are using it. We're thankful for the reports they submit that make us look good to the federal government so we can keep our funding. We're just really thankful. It has been just such a beneficial program, and we've been so excited by all the great work it's done. I know Dr. Pointer brought you all a brochure and Narcan for you to have. So, any questions?
Dana, thank you and your team for what you do, and I think we sometimes forget just how much money it saves the county as you guys are able to keep these folks out of jail. And I would encourage any of the councilors that ever get a chance, go to one of the graduations. I don't make them all, but I've been to a couple of them, they're incredible. I mean, watching the successes of these folks be celebrated, so we thank you for what you do.
The last Friday of every quarter, the next one will be in March, I will make sure everyone gets an invitation, please. It's a wonderful thing. They're held now at the Cascade Hills, their center. They let us use their center, and it's moving. If you ever want to hear a story of redemption, come to a graduation. Come meet some of my graduates. Like I said, the HR Director, Mr. Ray, or Mr. City Manager, I know y'all get tired of having to have those felony hiring meetings with me, but we believe in our product and we believe in what we do, and we believe in the power of change. And we have so many citizens out there. And we have so many citizens out there doing just that. All we hear about are the revolving door of arrest, and that's not always the case. And so we currently have, out of that list, and I won't identify them, six convicted felons working in my department. And they do amazing work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And we've got a transitional audit report for Inspections and Codes. Ms. McGinnis, the internal auditor, and her team are here. And I think the folks from Inspections and Codes are here as well.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to lead off or sharing the podium today with the entire team. Everyone worked hard on the audit. John Smith is going to get us started. I will share that the Inspections and Codes team were so accommodating. It was such a pleasure to get to work with them. I think we've seen some, some awesome, you know, advancements with our technology. Very, very proud group for cause. Anyway, John, please take it from here.
All right, good morning. As Donna said, this is our Inspections and Codes audit. This is the first audit that we've all completed with the team increasing to four, which is why all of us are here. Okay. So the audit was originally authorized December 15th of the year 2020. This was in response to a request from the previous internal auditor, John Redman. Our audit process actually began on May 23rd of the year 2023 and was completed recently by the four of us. I'm going to pass it over to Ben, I believe, is doing the audit process.
The audit process began with the authorization of the audit. An audit program was developed to address the material aspects of the departmental audit, followed by the entrance conference with the department head and the deputy city manager, finance, planning, and development. During the meetings, sorry. During the meeting, attendees were presented with a preliminary audit program items and invited to suggest any additional areas that warranted inspection. The audit techniques included reviews of documents and manuals, physical verification of employees and capital assets, tests of internal controls, examination of reports prepared by the department and others from independent sources, tests of transactions, interviews, meetings, observing, meeting observations, independent verifications, and other techniques as appropriate. During the audit, management was briefed on the findings and potential recommendations. Following the audit, a draft report is presented to the department management for review and response. A final report, including the departmental response, is then prepared and distributed to the department management, the mayor, and council concurrently. A presentation of counsel is scheduled to address any questions or concerns that they may have and to avail to the, bail it to the public. The auditor provides follow-up later to ensure that the agreed-to recommendations have been implemented and are properly functioning.
The purpose of the audit scope is just to help, you know, point out certain aspects that are, you know, present in the inspections and code departments. So during our scope or within the scope, we were able to perform some fieldwork activities. So during some of these activities, we were able to grab some of the payroll. And we found nothing to note. There was nothing that stuck out of the way. The only thing that we found was that there is a budget variance in financial year 2023 present in the lot and clearing maintenance. We also got to speak with the Assistant Director of Philip Smith. He was very helpful. He was, during our interview, he was showing some of the new products and training that him and his department had been working on. So it was very interesting to see how all these new products and training was actually being used with his department. And as well, we got to meet with Natalia Ziegler. Her team was very, very impressive as well. They have a very good, team-oriented community. They are all bouncing off of each other, working off of each other. It's very present in all the work that we saw. We got to go into the field with Officer Ramirez as well. He was able to show us, you know, some of the things that their department was able to do, some of the, you know, more normal routine calls that they would do, and some squatter, you know, cases that we got to follow up on as well. So it was very impressive to see all of the work that they were able to do. And during our fieldwork, we came up with some potential improvements. The only things that we really noticed during a lot of the fieldwork was that some of the systems could be a little bit more up to date. There's just a little bit of like miscommunication between some of these systems. They just don't integrate too well with each other, and it requires human intervention. And it, it is part of the process, but that is just a potential efficiency improvement that we could make within the departments. And that was pretty much it. It was very good being able to work with all of them. They were all very cooperative. And yeah, I'll hand it over to Donna to finish off the rest of the report.
Moving forward to our recommendations, we've got four recommendations to share with you. First, we recommend the establishment of a hyperlink in the Q Alert system, which would dramatically address the known cost of redundancy that exists between EnterGov and Q Alert. There would be benefits citywide, and our citizens would also enjoy more expeditious customer service. As a second recommendation, we're suggesting a quarterly budget review for code enforcement with a focus on adequate funding to address the pace of necessary abatements. I know that you've been very generous in the past. There is a history of responding whenever they've had a supplemental budget request, and we appreciate that. But it would probably be a good idea to just anticipate that to take place quarterly. The third recommendation is for funding for the training and additional efforts necessary for a more complete digitization of the department. There have been some impressive strides, and improved efficiencies will reduce our costs in the future. They're really using EnterGov just, they're taking it next level already. They're awfully close to a more complete digitization. And we're going to save costs down the road when we do that. As a last recommendation, we review, we recommend the review of procedures and resource allocation across multiple departments to reduce the amount of properties that become repeat nuisance properties. This would include collaboration with the Tax Commissioner's Office and with the Land Bank Authority. What we're seeing is sometimes you're going to go out to a property maybe three, four times in a year. And it would be nice if collaboration addressed that to perhaps be wiser stewards, you know, with that energy. Your trailing couple of pages of the presentation are simply some, some action shots. There we go, from code enforcement and also from our inspectors. The team did have a chance to go out and shadow both of these teams. They learned a lot. They, they saw what it's like to really walk in those shoes. And, and that's what we really try to do in bringing some value to the conversation in a department. The department was very accommodating to us. Do we have any questions at this point? We're joined today by Director Pruitt, by Natalia and Philip. And if, if there are some unique questions, they're, they're poised and ready. But do we have some questions as we wrap up the report today?
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I, I wanted, and I, I think we provide the director the opportunity to address the responses to the recommendations.
Absolutely. Would you like to come forward?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. And certainly, all the recommendations, and I did provide a written response to the report as well. But you know, the recommendations, you know, are valid. You know, code enforcement, we do take a look at that budget frequently. And council has provided additional funding and passed mid-year budgets to allow us to continue the property cleanups. The Q Alert/EnterGov thing is something that has been a topic of discussion. It was one thing Counselor Barnes always focused on was, you know, how to increase that communication. And the systems do two different things. Q Alert is a work order system, you know, that allows 3-1-1 to take in the complaints. And EnterGov, you know, is a comprehensive case management system that can schedule the inspections, sends out, you know, form letters and those kind of things. So they'll, we're never going to be able to completely bring them together, but there certainly are improvements. And we're continuing to have those conversations with 3-1-1 and IT to see, you know, how we can best make sure that's working the best way possible. The technology and the training. So, you know, we do anticipate having some additional funding for training, both for the staff and honestly, more importantly, for our contractors and customers. You know, we still have a lot of folks that, out in the building community that like to do things by paper. And when we get to the point that we're not going to accept paper anymore, there's going to be a, a training process that we need to make sure our customers know how to use our systems. So that's something we're evaluating for the upcoming budget year. And then the repeat properties is certainly something that is a challenge for Columbus. You know, Mr. Veals, who comes to Public Agenda, he was here at the last meeting, and one of the properties was 906 Brooks. You know, that property is over 10 years behind on its taxes, has a bunch of lot clearing liens, you know. At some point, the city is going to have to step in and go through a process to get that property back into good hands. And so we're just having some conversations about what that looked like. You know, obviously, it takes people and funding to make all that happen. So it's just an issue that, you know, we battle constantly with some of these repeat properties.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on going through and getting over the hump. And you do have a great team. I'm smiling in my booty because I'm happy she's back from surgery. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I will officially introduce them. So Philip Smith is the Assistant Director of Inspections and Codes. He's been in that position for a couple of weeks. Some of you may not know, unfortunately, in November, the previous Assistant Director, Fred Cobb, passed away very suddenly and unexpectedly. Was a, you know, he'd been with the city for over 10 years. He was a licensed architect. So certainly a great loss for our department. We were fortunate to have Philip in-house, you know, ready to step up. And then, you know, most of you know Natalia Ziegler. She's the code enforcement manager. So she is over those code enforcement officers that are out there every day.
And also, thank you for getting that information to me about the RV.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. I think that's all the questions.
Want to thank you all. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, we've got, Counsel, Counselor Tucker.
I, I apologize. And this, this is something for the auditor. We received a request from the DA's office that we do a transitional departmental audit on the victim's witness section. And they sent, I think it was an email that was sent last week. And I know it was a lot that was going on, but it didn't get added to the agenda because it was after Wednesday. I think it was either Thursday or Friday. So I would like to make a motion to do that transitional audit for the DA.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Finally, that represents the end of the mayor's agenda. So we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have a fairly short list of business items. Thank you zoning applicants that are here for your patience. We need a, a few votes first. The property 1126 30th Street.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item one. Any discussion on that item? Please put it on the screen. And counselors, if you enter your votes, please. Okay, that's approved.
All right. Next property is 425 Third Avenue, going residential office.
Motion, second, approve item two. Any discussion? All right, let's put that one on the screen. And counselors, you. All right, that's, that's approved. I think there's an imposter up there. I see Counselor Davis is buttoning this place. Good.
Counselor.
That's approved.
Got it.
You got it.
All right, then 2311 Fort Benning Road, also residential office.
Motion, second, approve the change of zoning at Fort Benning Road. Any discussion? Please put it on the screen. Counselors, any votes?
Okay, those are approved. We've got a couple of zoning public hearings. The first one up, 3114 Sixth Avenue, True Spring, going from RMF 2 to Residential Multi-Family 1, recommended for approval. Is the applicant here, True Spring? All right. Any questions around the table?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this petition? All righty, we'll vote on that then at the next regular council meeting. Ma'am, it'd be in two weeks, a 5:30 meeting. Okay?
Here, thank for your patience.
Our last zoning hearing is the Columbus Pickleball, hearing for 1641 Third Avenue, going from General Commercial to Uptown with conditions. Is the applicant here? All right. Any questions around the table?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Okay, we'll vote on that in two weeks also. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for waiting.
We've got a couple of resolutions, Mayor. The Super Bowl Sunday ratification of sales.
Motion, second, to ratify the Sunday sales. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that is approved.
Yeah.
All right. Motion, second, to approve the resolution, item seven. Any discussion on that item? If you would, I think we can post that. Do you have to put that on the screen?
Mayor, I was wondering if I could keep it.
All right, that's approved.
And then with the approval of that item, I've spoken with Counselor Hickey. I think we may only have a request for an executive session on personnel, if that's what the counselor desires. All right, that's all we've got, Mayor.
Okay. Move to the public agenda. Ms. Teresa Alameen, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network, regarding CCG elected officials and staff must be held accountable. Welcome, Ms. Alameen.
Well, after the long mayor's agenda, it's great to say it's still good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll begin with a Black History Month comment. On Martin Luther King Jr. Day this year, I was in Atlanta. The big celebration happens at Ebenezer Baptist Church. And everybody becomes a preacher when they step into the pulpit at Ebenezer. Mayor Andre Dickens, born in 1974, been mayor of Atlanta since January of 2022. He started with a biblical message, talking about Jesus asking two of his disciples, "Do you love me?" And they said, "Of course, Jesus, we love you." And Jesus said, "Feed my sheep." It was his way of making the point that love has to look like something. has to look like something. And he announced $60 million to house 20,000 of the unhoused in Atlanta. I'm from Atlanta, so I know Atlanta. I could hear people grumbling in those seats saying, "It's not enough. That's Atlanta. Columbus is unique." I have had the hardest time in my life trying to organize here. That 2025 plan, as an afterthought, poverty was added to it. It's 2025. It was a 10-year plan, started under that previous mayor. You should be held accountable for nothing being done, not a doggone thing about poverty. A lot has been spent on dogs and cats recently because when you spend $3.3 million to increase the budget of a nonprofit to $6.6 million, I don't understand that. It should save the taxpayers money when you privatize services. When the county of Durham sold the public hospital to Duke Medicine, Duke would come before the county, month after month, complaining about all the poor people using their emergency room. And the county commissioner said, "We know. That's why we sold it to you. It's your problem. It's a business you're in. We're done with it." Duke executives walked away empty-handed because they owned it. Because when you privatize something that you can't no longer afford to take care of, and you don't know how to do, you sell it. That's how the taxpayers save money. So how do you hold people accountable for mismanaging the taxpayer dollars? You do it at the ballot box. You do it at the ballot box. 13579 in the mail, 2026, that's next year. For bureaucrats, there's a different method. I do have a high suspicion, a healthy suspicion of bureaucrats and politicians. And this city, all citizens should be suspicious and work to hold you accountable for not doing anything about the least of these, the humans. Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, your agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I've got diverging diamond interchange, street lighting.
Motion second to approve the diverging diamond. Any discussion on that? Please put it on the screen. Counselors, you can vote, please. You want to continue with that, sir?
It's for street lighting at the Bradley Park interchange. Mayor for lighting is what that's for.
Okay, it is approved.
The second item I've got is a no-match grant for $3,259.
Motion and second to approve items two and three. Any discussion on either one? All right. If you would, post it on the screen. And just remember, you're voting one time, but it's for both of those items.
And that juvenile accountability court state grant is for $500,000 or the amount awarded for the Muskogee County Juvenile and Family Drug Courts. Got a couple of purchases. I got a dip.
All right, there's a motion and second to remove, to move, approve the purchases, A and B. Any further discussion? Anyone want it pulled? All right. Please put it on the screen, and you'll vote one time, but it'd be for both those purchases.
And number one is a ditch witch for Public Works. It's $50,982.64. And golf carts for the sheriff's office, $55,848.60.
What are the golf carts for?
The sheriff indicates they're going to be used by the sheriff's office to perform various duties. That's all that I know. Okay, so with that, Mayor, I've got a couple of updates on my agenda. The first one is South Lumpkin Road Streetscape. And Deputy City Manager Hod, you want to talk about or introduce? Okay. Okay, we've got our Engineering Director, Mr. Vance.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney and Counsel. So Kathy Stollard's with Heathon Lineback, one of our staple engineering outfits. It's on a on-call. And she's here today to do a presentation on our proposals for South Lumpkin Road Streetscape. It's currently a five-lane highway, but the traffic data and everything supports a road diet to a three-lane. And that would mitigate a lot of the right-of-way costs, but I'm going to turn it over to her, let her present to y'all for your consideration. Thank you, Kathy.
And Mr. Mayor, I will say, former councilwoman, Mimi Woodson is here. And this is one of the projects she stayed on us about, South Lumpkin Road Streetscape. So I wanted to acknowledge that she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vance. Good morning, everybody. It's nice to be here. So I wanted to start with just introducing the project. So here's the agenda that we'd like to talk about today. Just going to introduce the project, give the description. We've got two approaches that we'd like to present today. The three-lane approach, which would be the lane diet, and then the five-lane approach, which is the way the roadway is configured today. And then we want to go through the cost analysis just to break down the differences, and then just give you a summary of everything. So to introduce the project, it begins down at the roundabout where the new Infantry Drive is going to come in. It's also where I think the Water Department entrance is. And then it's going to go all the way up to Victory Drive, which is State Route 1. The project is funded with TSPLOS funding, so we wanted to make sure, you know, we made that clear. The goals for this project are to beautify the corridor. We want to improve pedestrian and bicycle accessibility, and we want to calm the traffic. Because that's always a key when you do any kind of improvement project. The description of the project, as we said, we're going to reconstruct it from the roundabout up to Victory Drive. It's about 1.82 miles long, and the design speed is 35. So we're going to match that for the proposed. This project is funded. It does have the TO, which is the Transportation Investment Act, along with TSPLOS funds. And it has a total budget of $10,100,000. So that's going to include the preliminary engineering, the utility costs, the right-of-way costs, and the construction costs. We have to think about all that. NTP was issued to us back in June of last year. And right now, construction is scheduled for 2027. We are proposing a five-foot sidewalk along the right side of the roadway and a 10-foot shared-use path on the left side. And then we're also going to implement three rapid flashing beacons to help with pedestrian and bicycle accessibility. A portion of the roadway, we're proposing to have a 16-foot raised median. This will also help with calming traffic, but it will also help with pedestrian accessibility. And we're only proposing that in the area where the schools are because of the numerous driveways on this corridor. So here's some of the traffic volumes that we have done internally. You can see it's a really low truck volume. It's only 2.21%. And you can see the increase of the traffic is pretty minimal when you're looking at currently, traffic of 11,450 up to our base year, which is four years from now, or from last year, which only increases about 100 vehicles per day versus in 2048, because we do a 20-year design for any of our roadway projects. We're only going up about 600 vehicles per day. So it's not a big increase that we're seeing. So as far as utilities along the corridor, as you can see, there's various numerous utilities that we're working around. Most of them are pretty easy to work around. The trickiest one is going to be that transmission line. And then Georgia Power has a lot of just regular power lines, distribution lines. And AT&amp;T also has several lines. We do impact some of the water a little bit and some of the telecommunications, but the biggest trouble was trying to get around those power lines. So here's our three-lane approach. Three and the five are pretty similar, but I wanted to go through both. So this one does propose also the 16-foot flush median. So that just means it's flat versus in other areas, it will be raised through the school area, like we talked about earlier. We'll still have that 10-foot shared path on the left. This one does have minimal utility impacts because we're able to bring everything in and get away from those utilities that's on the outer side of the right-of-way. The downside is we do have to rebuild a lot of the existing drainage, because right now there's an existing curb line. And when we bring everything in, all of that drainage has to be rebuilt to the new curb line. And we have to build that new curb line. So there's a cost there. The positive is there's only seven parcels that we're going to be impacting. So that's really minimal for a project this size and this length. We did analyze the traffic also. So it's a Level of Service A, which is great for both the existing and proposed. You just don't see that very often. So here, I wanted to show a typical, kind of what we're looking at. So you can kind of see the existing curb lines on the outside there. And then we bring everything in to give it the additional width, basically, to get in the 10-foot shared use and the five-foot sidewalk on the outside. So that's why we're not impacting many parcels, because we're pulling everything in. We're not going out. And we're still able to provide, you know, the level of service with the traffic and meet those key goals of the project with pedestrian accessibility. So here's kind of the breakdown. I'm not going to go through every one. But here's kind of the breakdown of all the different categories we kind of analyze. The ones I want to focus on are utilities and right-of-way. There's still, you know, 200, 300,000, which is not insignificant. But when you total everything up, we're looking at about just over 11 million. Now, we do have a 20% contingency built into that because we're just at a concept level. So we want to make sure we're going worst-case scenario with everything. Five-lane, like I said, is very similar. The difference is we're going to maintain those curb lines. We're not bringing things in. We're still going to have the 10-foot shared use left, a path on the left. As you can see, we have 90 parcels that were being impacted. So that's a huge number. Exponential utility impacts, there wasn't even a way to really quantify it for this presentation. And the existing drainage won't be impacted. So we're able to keep that in place, so you don't have to rebuild it. But yet again, the traffic is still a Level of Service A for existing and proposed. So that's comparable to the three-lane. As you can see, the typical is very similar, but you're holding the existing condition. You're holding that existing curb line, and everything's going out. So that's why we're impacting all of this additional right-of-way. We're impacting all these parcels as we build out, because we have to add on not only the trail and the sidewalk, but we have to tie the grade down to the existing grade today. So here's the breakdown for the five-lane. Yet again, I'm not going to go through each of it. But you can see if we go down to utilities and right-of-way, we're already way more than we were at the three-lane. And you can see the total there, we're just under 15 million. So we're already, you're seeing a big difference here between the three-lane and the five-lane already. And we do still have that 20% contingency because of where we are at design. So I did want to show a side-by-side because I think this really gets the point across of where the differences are in this project. So the blue is the five-lane. The yellow is the three-lane. As I talked about, the right-of-way is the biggest difference. I mean, you can't compare $3 million to $300,000. That's a big, big difference. Utilities, you're looking at 800,000 versus 200,000. That's another pretty big difference. The only area really that the three-lane is more expensive is in the drainage, because we have to rebuild everything, but it's not a big difference. And then the roadway. And it's in the roadway because we've got to rebuild that curb line. So that adds up to about a $700,000 difference. But when we do the side-by-side, you can really see, you know, where the pluses and the minuses are. So we took the five-lane, which was, you know, kind of the preferred, minus the three-lane, which at the time was going to be our first alternate. And the only time that the five-lane is cheaper is in that roadway portion, because we're rebuilding the curb line, and then the drainage, because the drainage is going to stay intact for the five-lane. And then the overall difference between the two alternates is about 3.5 million. So I just wanted to summarize everything. So yet again, three-lane does require drainage reconstruction. They have about seven parcels impacted. We've got minimal utility impacts. And another point would be that we will have additional room for landscaping. So if we wanted to put new trees in, new bushes, it'll allow more room for that. And it does allow better accessibility. There's that existing pedestrian bridge right there at the school. We will be able to improve access to that because we'll have additional room in the right-of-way. So then that total construction cost, again, is right over 11 million versus the five-lane requires minimal drainage because we're holding the curb line. It's got about 90 parcels impacted and just numerous utility impacts. There's not a big opportunity for landscaping here because we just don't have a lot of room from where the existing curb line is to where the existing right-of-way is. So it's going to limit what we can do there in the proposed condition. And we're unable to provide that additional accessibility to the ped bridge. And then, of course, the total cost is right at almost 15 million. So just summary, I just want to hit the high points, make sure we're tying it back to our key goals here. The three-lane alternative does meet all of our key goals. It provides beautification for the corridor. It improves that pedestrian and that bicycle accessibility. And more importantly, it calms the traffic. It's going to slow the traffic down. It's going to give people a better opportunity to access their property. And it's going to help, you know, with the bus route that we have out there. This alternate also improves pedestrian safety, which is what we want to think about, not just access, but safety. We want to make sure everybody's safe so that they can get where they're going. We've got schools in this corridor. The five-lane alternative meets some of these key goals. This does provide beautification, because we're still, it's still a streetscape project. And it does improve pedestrian and bicycle accessibility. But unfortunately, it provides a minimal traffic calming because we're still going to have all five lanes there. And it's not going to really help with safety throughout the areas of the school. And in addition, it has minimal pedestrian safety due to this. So thank you. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Councilor Kogel.
Is there any study on whether or not the Benning, that Benning Road connector would have any impact on, like if that Benning, you know, that connecting road between South Lumpkin and Fort Benning Road, if that was ever built, is there a traffic study on what the increase of traffic would be if that connector?
They did account for the proposed new traffic for the two, for Infantry Road and Military Drive.
That was included?
Those were all included in their traffic analysis.
And does Fort Moore have any intention of ever opening that ACP joint, or ACP entrance?
I don't think so.
Down on that side?
You know, once you get south.
If they ever do, then a three-lane is not going to work at all.
Well, there's only one lane in each direction below, below the, I mean, north of the roundabout for the first three quarters.
Correct. I mean, but I was, like, I was here when the ACP joint, or joint, that ACP gate was open. And that was compared to Benning Road. That was the, that was the preferred entrance into Fort Benning. If they ever, or Fort Moore, excuse me, if they ever reopen that, then the traffic, like, just looking ahead at the difference between a three-lane and a five-lane, and being a little bit proactive and naughty, and making sure that we have that conversation with Fort Moore of, do they have, do they ever have intentions of reopening that gate? Because that will crush South Lumpkin and the traffic flow over there with the increased amount of traffic. amount of traffic that would flow from Fort Benning Road to South Lumpkin.
We can reach out to them.
Okay. And then is there, you know, on some of our other presentations, like, I think if we look back to presentations about the improved corridor for 13th Street and for 17th Street and some of the other presentations that we've had, we've had some better artistic renditions. I think it's really hard to look at this presentation and envision what three and a five lane difference would be. And when we're talking about impacting seven versus 90 parcels, that's a, that's a big deal. And there's a lot of people who are very concerned about their, what they consider the city right of way as their property where they maintain it, right? And they have been maintaining that. And to be able to take a look at a map of, this is comparing the three versus the five lanes so that people can have a better visual. Like, right now, just looking at the Google map or whatever is up there, that's what I can equate it to. So is, I mean, it's hard for me as a visual person, but it will be super hard for, for the residents of Oakland Park and for Benning Hills out there to see what, what we're talking about. And I think we can do a better job compared to some of the other projects that have been going on.
Right. Well, there would be a forthcoming public involvement open house. We were kind of wanting to hopefully nail down what typical section we wanted to use before they got into the nuts and bolts of the more detailed drawing.
Sure. But just, I mean, people who are watching, watching this presentation for the first time are going to say, well, there's a three and a five lane, and it might be seven parcels. It might be 90 parcels. Like, and for some people, they're going to be like, council's going to vote on this like right now, and I'm not going to have a say, and there's going to be some panic. And so I think if we can, even if we can amend this presentation with, with a better idea of what the difference between the seven and the 10 are, even if it's a, you know, a fairly, like, it doesn't have to be super detailed, but at least give people an, an idea of what, of what that looks like in the interim of being able to present something that has a better architectural, like, viewing of what's going on. Because this is a big, I mean, this is a big project, and this is a really, really big deal for South Columbus. And I feel like, at this point, they're kind of being left in the dark. And I can hear the phone calls that I'm going to get already of, we don't know what's happening. That's not fair. You're going to do whatever you want to, like, council's going to do whatever you all want to do, or this government's going to do whatever they want to do, and we're not going to get a say. And so just to, to put that out there and, and show, and show the people exactly what we're talking about right now, even if we're not making this decision, right? I mean, we're obviously not making this decision right now, but it's, to be fair, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important that we at least, like, even the Liberty District that's up on the screen right here is a, a better showing of what is happening on South Lumpkin than what we've got going on right now. So. But if that would be possible. And then my, my only other comment or question is, and request is, and I talked to Deputy Pam Hodge about it very briefly, about having the, like, the importance of having a, at least bare minimum two, but three, community meetings across from, you know, from Oakland Park, maybe even using the, the new library as a, as a location, but then also with Benning Hills because that is a very important corridor. But making sure that we involve the community in this decision because this is a, this is, again, this is a big deal. And this is kind of the, the springboard into redeveloping South Columbus. And if we, if we don't involve the community, then, I mean, they're going to be the voices of what goes on and what they need and how much, I mean, I can only tell you how many sidewalks are needed because of the calls that I get for kids trying to walk to, to Eddie's school, right? But they live it every day, and they need to have the majority of this, the majority of this input. And I think you can look at the, you can look at the, the influence that Sears Woods had on the future of that area. And I would, I mean, and I can tell you that Oakland Park and Benning Hills can have the exact same impact. They're just going to need to speak up, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we come here first to council and share this with them. And then you're going to go out and you're going to have your, the public meetings. And it'll be one of those public meetings where you'll have the drawings on the boards. They'll be able to walk up to the board and say, where do I live or where is my business? And they will then share their input, their concerns, and you record those.
Yeah, and those will be detailed drawings.
Yeah. And so, but, but once you have all the meetings, then you're going to come back here.
Well, that's what I'm thinking by, by hearing.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. That'd be once a non-negotiable.
We may need to present the three-lane option and the five-lane option at the public involvement.
Yeah, and then.
And then get feedback on that.
And, and then come back here.
Come back and say, we had 90% of the 100 people that showed up are in favor of the three lane or something of that nature.
And then if it's the five lane, then the council will have to just say where the three and a half million dollars will come from to proceed with the five lane. And so that should be the process, okay? You're here.
We will.
You go do that, and then you come back.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Next, I've got Liberty District Master Plan. Neil Clark is the architect. And I don't, do you have any opening comments? But I, I do see a number of the Liberty Board, Liberty Theater Board members are here. And I guess, obviously, this is the Liberty District Master Plan, and they are interested. But we have Neil Clark from Heck Burdeshaw, and he's going to talk about the Liberty District Master Plan. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Council. I wanted to start off today with just a thank you to you guys for engaging Heck Burdeshaw to do this important master plan. It's, I'm always looking to learn more about this great city that we live in and particularly about its history. And the Liberty District did not disappoint on that, on that count. So I'll walk you through the, the master plan. We're not going to linger too much on any one after the, after this is over. Any questions yet? I'll be happy to answer. All right, starting off here with the, just talking about the history of the Liberty District. And it is, it is recognized as a district by the National Register of Historic Places. And there are several buildings in the district that are individually listed, too, including St. James AME Church and First African, the Liberty Theater, and the Ma Rainey House listed separately. So, you know, as part of this master plan, we go through and we identify those. We give you the history of all these different churches. This is a map that just shows, you can see the Liberty District up there with, with the yellow dot in it. The yellow dot is the Liberty Theater, which is the heart of the Liberty District. And that just shows you everything that's happening around it. Of course, the Liberty area is kind of in an industrial, kind of a, between a residential and an industrial part of town. This is a map that shows from the, from the Liberty Theater what 15-minute walking intervals will get you. So a 20-minute walk from the Liberty Theater will get you into Uptown Columbus. And we are also showing all the different developments that are happening in the, in the area, up and down Sixth Avenue, and of course, over on the, the riverfront with the W.C. Bradley development happening there. We think another development that will impact the Liberty District is the Judicial Center that's, that's ongoing right now. We think that that, that center of activity in Uptown so close to the Liberty District area will put a, a demand in that Liberty area for housing and for commercial uses. So we call the churches in that area anchor institutions. They are the, they are the thing that is constant over the years. Churches were first introduced into the Liberty area in the 1840s, which is only 12 years after Columbus as a city was founded. And so these, these churches, a lot of them have been there since the 1880s. And they have stayed there through the good times and the bad. The churches have hung, hung in there with their congregations, and they are still active and effective today. And of course, we want to make sure that anything we do with our master plan is strengthening that, that part of this community. Up here, when you read through it, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of community building that goes on when, when strong churches are in a neighborhood. And we recognize that. So the, the planning goals for this exercise encourage existing property owners to invest in renovations. I think, you know, we've got some stock that is left in that neighborhood. We need to encourage the property owners that are down there to invest in their properties and, and upgrade that, that neighborhood. That's, that's really the first line of, of bringing that, that neighborhood back. Plan a complete, completed neighborhood with a renovated Liberty Theater at, at its center. That work is already going on with some exterior renovations to the Liberty Theater to button it up and fix some longstanding roof issues. Envision the success of the Ma Rainey House Museum. That's part of this master plan as well. And we see using it as, as a place to showcase the blues and, and of course, Ma Rainey and her contribution to that in Columbus. This, this master plan also includes a, a park in that area for the future residents of the Liberty District. We need to create a plan, working with the city, that will kind of enhance and enable the transfer of property that the city owns in that neighborhood to, to private hands and turn it back into the, the tax district, the tax structure. And then as, as part of our master plan, residential down there is, they're already down there, and we want to enhance that by adding some residential. And we are saying, let's, let's add a variety of housing types down there to strengthen that neighborhood. All right. Let's see, this is the, the Metro Bus. Two of the lines already go through there. So the, but the bus system is, is poised to support the Liberty District as it, as it matures and changes. And we are only a couple of blocks away from the Dragonfly Trail that will get us down to the Chattahoochee River Walk. There are several overhead power lines, transmission lines, and smaller electric distribution. This is property ownership with red being the City of Columbus. And you can see there are three main blocks there where the city owns the majority of the land on those blocks. This shows property ownership and use. And the, the houses and other properties in black are either vacant or underutilized. And so you can see there's several of those in that area. This shows the outline of the Liberty District and the floodplains. The, the city has spent a lot of time and money over the last 10 years working in that area to fix flood issues. And this, we see the, the blue is the 100-year flood, and the brown is a 500-year flood, which affects one of the blocks in the, in the Liberty Theater, Liberty District. So as, as developers and other people come into that area for developing properties in that area, there are ways to, to facilitate that and to give them access to funding. There's, the enterprise zone is in purple. Most of the Liberty District is in the enterprise zone. Historic Columbus has a rehabilitation loan program for rehabilitating houses with a historic, in a historic area. And that is facilitated through Neighbor Works, which they, they do a good job with that. There's also the TAD, that area in the red dot is the TAD area. And then there's also a federal opportunity zone that the whole Liberty District is in. So those are, when, when the city meets with developers, you know, those are, those are all, you know, arrows in the quiver to talk about for how to finance projects. So this is just a view of Ninth Street and Sixth Avenue. If you looked there today, it's kind of an underutilized parking lot. And what we are doing is trying to turn that area back, you know, over time and with many projects, turn that area back into a vibrant neighborhood as it used to be. When I talk to a lot of people about the nature of the Liberty District and its history and what it used to be, people talk about that very passionately, about how it was a place where people, they, they worship there, they lived there, they had businesses there. It was a very entrepreneur-friendly area for the black community. And what we want to do is turn that back into a neighborhood again, a fully functioning neighborhood that has houses and parks and places to, to eat and shop and law offices and everything that, that a neighborhood should have. And, you know, this corner, I think, is important because it gets lots of traffic by there. And I think introducing the Liberty as a district at that point is, is a good thing to do. So we go through the, the area and show some of its character, some of the different character of buildings in that area. Of course, adjacent to us is Tom's Foods and also the Loomis Campus. Both of those could be sparked by development in, in the Liberty District to renovate those areas. Of course, our Housing Authority has done lots of work with Columbus Commons down there. They've got another project that is coming up for senior housing in that area. And so that, you know, that is good news for the Liberty District as well. And of course, the, the Liberty Theater. I know there are other, other projects coming up on the interior of that building. And the Ma Rainey House. All right, we have what we call opportunity site locations. Opportunity sites are, are buildings that are privately owned and that could use some upgrading. And so we've tried to identify those along with some, you know, side information about how big the lot is, how, how many square feet are in this building. And it shows you on the map exactly where they are located. You know, some of them look like they may be too far gone, but it's, you know, you can do a lot with a building to bring it back. And of course, gateway locations, you know, as, as the Liberty develops, we think development of some signage as you enter that area will, will make that Liberty area cohesive part of Columbus. And also, not just the, the, not just the gateway, but the signage throughout that, that area, too. When we did the Uptown project, we did a complete and comprehensive signage package that, that helps make the character of Uptown. And I think we could do the same thing with the Liberty area by designing. Liberty Area by designing some Liberty-specific signs. That's what was done for, or a portion of what was done for the Uptown 25 years ago. And of course, I talked earlier about housing, a variety of different types of housing in that neighborhood would be good because it would address different price points for people to own property and build houses down there. This is the property distribution today. It shows the lot layouts as they exist today. And then, today down there, Lula Huff and her family own the property at the bottom left of that block. Of course, the Liberty Theater in the center, and then, there's an existing apartment complex in the upper part of the third block. And so, working with that, we've come up with an overall master plan that shows the first block being developed as commercial retail loft-type housing. On the Huff property at the bottom, we are saying, bring that back with a neighborhood grocery store in that area, and a new art center to support the Liberty Theater. Of course, in the next block, you've got the Liberty Theater itself, which is 300 seats. We want to develop the west side of that property as kind of an outdoor meeting space, an amphitheater. They could do some outdoor performances there and access a stage from directly inside the building of the Liberty. And then, directly across the street from the Liberty is the downtown park, which is Liberty Park, and we're talking about a community garden, area for food trucks on the weekend, maybe a farmer's market could be there, and a city water park on that area for the use of that neighborhood. And of course, in front of the Liberty Theater, we show redoing the sidewalk in front of there to make it more of a plaza that you can also drive through. So, it's more pedestrian-focused to get from the Liberty Theater into that park area. And then, at the bottom area near the Halsey Chapel, we see some single-family housing development there. And over near the commercial development, we have two sites for apartments and then two sites for townhouses. And of course, we always like to think about the future and plan for the future, and we show a future expansion of the Liberty going into that parking lot that is to the north of the Liberty. And we don't know what that expansion might be. It could be another performance venue with more seats. It could be spaces to develop more of the heritage, cultural, and art aspect of the Liberty Theater in the Liberty District. We don't know, but that is where some expansion could happen. And of course, if we lose those parking spots, we'll probably need to do a parking deck across the street so that we have adequate parking for everything. And so, you know, what can the city do aside from the developers who would come in and develop this? We've got sidewalks and street crossings that need to be done that match what you have already on Sixth Avenue. And the what's in red shows the areas that still needs street crossings and sidewalks. You could do the first phase of parking down there in the Liberty Park. That could be a city project. These are the downtown, or the Liberty District lighting poles. I think we need to work with Georgia Power to see what we could do in terms of undergrounding some of those lower light poles and make that area, that would do a lot to beautify And of course, that's the plaza right in front of the Liberty and the housing developments that could happen in that area. And that is the outdoor amphitheater at the rear of the Liberty Theater itself. So, any questions?
Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark, one of my concerns, I wanted to ask a question about the floodplain. I understand that area still floods a lot, and I know maybe the city manager can answer this for me about, we have, don't we have some T-SLOSS money that was probably, that could be used to help with that particular issue?
Well, let me just say that we did a flood abatement project from, really across by A.J. McClung Football Stadium, all the way up to, I believe, 11th, where the restaurant is.
Roy Cafe.
Roy Cafe. And we spent $37 million on that flood abatement project, and it was supposed to, and it has handled the flooding, the severe flooding that we had. And when we did that, we said, it's not going to eliminate flooding 100%, but it would get close, and I believe it has. Now, I don't know, and maybe you can help me with that, there may be some limited flooding, but I don't believe I've gotten any complaints about any significant flooding in that area since that flood abatement project.
Well, I do know that when we do have a heavy pour of rain, that the underpass still have to be blocked off.
Okay, yeah.
Because of the flooding.
Yeah.
And that bags up to the Liberty Theater sometime in that area. It gets a little, you start getting water over in that area too, in that little grassy area and things like that next to it.
So, in the underpass, we have had problems, and we do, and we've had to close that off. So, that is an area. But none, and I'm aware of it, the Liberty Theater now.
Not at the Liberty, I said Roya Cafe here.
Oh, Roy Cafe, okay.
Yeah, oh, in that area, because that's why.
So, we do have some limited, that flood abatement project stopped, is it right there? Is where it stopped, do you recall? When we, did it go to 12?
I think it went all the way up to...
I'm trying to, I know it went to 11th. But it, I need to take a look at the underpath to see what's causing that, but the money that we have, we don't have TIA money for that. We have TIA, we have $4 million of TIA money for the one block in front of the Liberty Theater that he showed you, but we don't have any TIA money for that underpass, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
But I do know that that still floods, as you said, yeah.
And also, Mr. Clark, I think last time you was here, I asked a question that, you know, whether or not you all had reached out and contacted all, I know you reached out to the stakeholders, but the old property owners, you know, people who've been there for decades, did y'all reach out to all of them to, you know, share with them your plan and your ideas?
I won't say I've met with all of them, but yes, a lot of them, I've met with Lula Huff, Oz Roberts, of course, is here, I've met with him.
Did you have a chance to meet with Ms. Starr?
At a time, I met with him and his staff.
Okay. Did you have a chance, and your people have a chance to meet with Ms. Starr, with Roya Cafe?
No, we have not met with her.
You didn't get a chance to meet with them?
But we're having two public meetings, which, next week, in the evening.
And we can certainly, if she's able to meet with him and talk to him.
She won't be able to, but Ms. Ross, her daughter, Ms. Carol Ross, is here today, listening in, and she would be the person that would be representing her mother.
Yeah.
And I just think that it's so important that they're included in everything that's going on because of the historical site that's there.
Yeah.
I remember when I was a little boy, when the Roya Cafe used to be something else. I forgot that, H&amp;D Club, I think, I think it was something like that.
Mayfair.
Well, Mayfair was around the street from, probably from the police department down from Top Hat.
Yeah.
You know, but that, no, Club Levanta, Club Levanta is what it used to be called.
Okay.
Now, I was a little boy then, and I know that's where my mom and dad used to go party and hang out, and it was a historical site for African-Americans to go and have a good time. And I remember when Ms. Starr turned it into Roya Cafe, and I know many of us in here have eaten there, you know, great food, one of my stops, you know, to always go and eat, some of the best living onions I ever tasted, so.
Yeah.
So, but I would just want to just make sure that they are being included into this conversation of what we're trying to do.
And we can have Neil to do that, but, you know, I do know that he reached out to try and identify stakeholders, people who live there. You were picking my brain for who to go and interview, and so, I know he's interviewed a lot of them, and he'll be glad to talk to her.
So, if you would, Mr. Clark, before you leave, I know Ms. Ross is over there, maybe she can give you her contact information before you leave out.
We can have staff to get her contact and get it to Neil.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you're doing. Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, they're telling me she's on the Liberty Board, and so, they have her contact information, but just get it anyway.
And just to add to that, we do have two public meetings scheduled, one for Monday, February 17th, from 5:00 to 6:30, and one on Wednesday, February 19th, from 5:00 to 6:30. Those will both be held at the Annex at 420 10th Street, and so, we'll make sure the notice and the press release goes out today, that we'll go through this presentation with those that are there and get any comments and feedback on the master plan.
And I just heard that you all said that she is still currently on the board.
Yes.
It's two, that's what I was thinking, it's two different boards here. So, she's not on the Liberty Board, but you're on the Liberty District Board.
There's a Liberty Theater Board.
Let us just get with her, we'll get with her.
Well, I'm just trying to get some clarification, you know, on the records, so that's all.
There's only one board.
Would you go talk to her?
I think there's something we can get worked out. We'll just let them talk to her right now instead of shouting at her.
Well, can we ask her to come up and maybe just let her have a word to say what board she's on?
Well, I mean, I don't know that she needs to come up and talk about what board she's on. I think she could probably get with staff, and they'll get it cleared out.
Yeah.
It sounds like it was just a miscommunication.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Thank you. Counselor Kogel?
Can we get a copy of the master plan that, it's not linked on our agenda, is that possible to upload?
Yes, Mr. Clark was here several months ago, and we handed out the presentation and the master plan, but we can put the link.
But just so that, yeah, so that we can look at it. Well, yeah, yeah, well, not for me, though, just for other people.
Yes.
And then, is it possible to push that meeting out? I mean, Monday and Wednesday is like, in a very few amount of days, and not really, it is winter break this weekend, and a lot of people are not here, just, I mean, like, I mean, Monday, Monday, the schools are out, people are gone for vacation. I don't know if people can really plan for this. Can we push it back a few days so that we can communicate it out to the community a little bit more?
Sure, we'll look at additional dates.
Okay.
Changing the dates to the following week or the week after.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right.
Well, and I also wanted to say that, I mean, I am a big supporter of this master plan, and I really do think some of the other projects that we have going on that are bookending this is going to be, like, not to beat a dead horse again, but our soccer complex that is hopefully going to be coming around soon. I mean, that is going to be a big impact for the Liberty District as well as pickleball and some of the connecting, the bike trails, and really making that flawless from Uptown into the Liberty District. So, some of those other projects that we're working on are really going to have a, also have a big impact, so, thanks.
Counselor Huff?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think the mix-up on the boards and things is the fact that they used to have a Liberty District Board and a Liberty Theater Board now, and Ms. Ross was on the Liberty District Board along with others, and they dismantled that Board. Now, there's only the Liberty Cultural Arts Board for the theater itself. So, some of the people here, they hadn't had a chance, I guess, to sit down and discuss as much as they would like to. I've had discussions with Ms. Ross about the fact of her locality and not being talked to and having input and everything, so please get with her and talk to her and get her input. And if we could, I'd like to ask, you know, to set meetings.
But, so, we'll get, I mean, we'll talk, but she, we just confirmed she is on the Liberty Theater Board.
They still have it? I mean, yeah, she's on Theater Board, I'm saying, she used to be on the District there, they dismantled that.
Okay, she got with her, and we got it.
Okay, 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 okay. On what you presented today, what do timelines look like as far as moving forward, trying to get investment into the area and all of those things after we meet?
So, we'll have the public meetings, we'll come back to council and request adoption of the master plan, and then, we'll start putting together a timeline for implementation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. It appears to be all the questions.
Thank you very much.
Neil, thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, our final presentation today, Mayor, is Integrated Waste Director Drell Short. And she has consultants here with her who has been working on our landfill approval of slopes with EPD, and so, that has not occurred, and so, there is going to be an ask at the end of this for monies to expand a CO, CO5, at the landfill. So, with that, Director Short.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, everyone. For many years, Public Works has come before you in regards to the landfill, the capacity timelines, and the health of the landfill. I have asked our consultant, Mr. Monty Jones, who's with Atlantic Coast Consulting out of Atlanta, to come forward today to give you an update on our capacity timelines for our landfill. So, with that, I'm going to ask Monty to come on forward.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to address you all today, talk about my favorite subject, which is trash. I do want to let you know that I'm not just some outside consultant that's never stepped foot on your landfill. I actually used to work for the city as a landfill manager years ago, but I'm intimately knowledgeable about and familiar with the landfills in Columbus. And I did want to take the opportunity to say that you all should be very proud of the Pine Grove landfill. I know landfills, it's one of the nicest, most well-run municipal solid waste facilities in the state of Georgia. It does not have any environmental issues that would elevate it to corrective action, which has kind of been heard of for a landfill that's been operating for almost 30 years now. And the Integrated Solid Waste Team has been very forward-thinking in procuring extra airspace and diverting materials that can be used for beneficial use to really extend the life of a landfill and make sure it is a resource for the citizens of Columbus for a long time to come. But I'll get into what I'm really here to talk about today. So, as you can see on the screen, this is the Pine Grove landfill. On the east side, you have the active constructed phases, 1, 2, 3, and 4. On the west side, those are the future unconstructed phases of Phase 5 and 6. On the west side, those are the future unconstructed phases of phase five and six. Uh, to the south, you have a separate area for construction and demolition waste. Um, as you can see, that C and D waste area three, we actually permitted that area in 2017. Um, and you might say, well, why didn't we just permit that from the very beginning? Well, historically, there was a wetland in the middle there. We were able to do an investigation, went to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they agreed that that area dried up and that it was no longer wetland and you could go in the middle there. And then, um, a part of this major modification that we're doing right now, that area to the north is a future compost area where you can do class four composting, which includes bio solids and food waste. Uh, right now, you're only approved to do, uh, yard waste composting in that area. But part of this major modification is for that. Uh, the other part of the major modification right now is, um, we're doing a vertical expansion in your existing phases. Uh, so this is a picture of the Pine Grove landfill, and as you can see, it has that stair step terraced approach to it. So when this was permitted back in the 1990s, uh, the thinking was that you had to have those terraces for slope stability. And then the other purpose is it diverts stormwater off of the landfill. But now that they have 30 years of data on subtitle D landfills, they realize that you can actually go up at a three to one slope, take out those terraces, or those terraces will be filled in with trash. And then what you do is you just put a tack-on berm on the outside. It's a soil berm that allows you to divert the stormwater off of the face of the landfill. So that's what it looks like in real life, and this is kind of a cross-section on a plan view. That dash line in the middle kind of represents what your terraces look like at the landfill. And then the solid thicker line on the outside is how we're going to fill that in, where we're going to take it out to. And as you can see above that dash line, that, that is a lot of airspace that you gain by just filling in those terraces. And it allows you to actually go 20 feet higher at the top of the landfill. So it's actually a substantial amount of airspace that you gain. Now, in phases one through four, you're going to be filling in those terraces. But in phases five and six, once this is approved, you're just going to be going straight up. So at a three to one slope. So that's really, really easy airspace to gain in the phases five and six. Um, so this is a major modification with the Georgia EPD, so I just want to give you a timeframe of how this has gone. And so we started this project in September of 2019. We did have some field work that we had to do, some drilling, because, uh, for that, uh, class four compost area, you have to determine where the seasonal high groundwater elevation is. So there was some work that went into that, but we did submit the, uh, site suitability report in August 2020, and that was approved in April of 2021. And then we had to submit the revised design and operation plan that shows how we're going to do the, the vertical expansion. And that was submitted in August of 2021. And I did highlight this because this is, you know, those plans sat with EPD for two and a half years before they responded on it. That is an unusual timeline with EPD. Uh, that major modification I was talking about before for the C and D area, from the very start to the time we got permit approval, that was three years for that C and D expansion. And it was actually a more complicated expansion due to the Army Corps of Engineers permitting. So that is an unusual timeline. There were multiple follow-ups with ACC and CZG employees to try and facilitate that. Um, it didn't get traction until January of 2024. And then, uh, right now, we're kind of in that comment and response phase with EPD to get that approval. And then once we do get approval from them, there is still one more step, and that is a final public hearing has to be done before it can go forward. So. Um, I did want to give you a breakdown of what kind of your remaining capacity is at Pine Grove right now. So those currently constructed phases, phases one through four, uh, we estimate that that airspace is going to be depleted in January of 2026. So once you get the vertical expansion approved, that does take phases one through four out to about 2035. However, I do want to stipulate that, that you're at the point right now where that airspace is going to be pretty hard to get in those terraces. It probably, you probably don't want that to be the only place that you have to put garbage, you know, because it is difficult airspace to, to get. So the currently permitted airspace, when you include phases five and six, that takes you out to December 2045. And then the total MSW airspace with that vertical expansion, that takes you out to January of 2062. And then, um, the C and D, which is calculated separately, that's, uh, the end of that life is November of 2044. And even though this has been a long, kind of arduous process with EPD, I did want to just highlight that this does get you 2.5 million cubic yards of airspace, just the vertical expansions. That's extra airspace. Uh, that airspace, based on your current tonnage rates, tipping fees, is estimated to be about $61 million and increases life of the landfill by 17 years. So it is worthwhile to go after this permitting project. And then, of course, you do get the class four compost area in there with it, which will allow you to compost bio solids and food waste. But given that, that, that permit is not approved yet for that airspace in what phases one through four, we do recommend that phase five, start construction. So phase five does have five cells. We're recommending that the first three of those cells be constructed, um, to meet that January 2026 timeline. Um, as you saw in that plan, this is a separate area of the landfill. You got to go across the creek to get this. So it does have quite a bit of new infrastructure that's going to be needed on that side, such as an access road, lift station, force main. Um, but we did an engineer's opinion of probable cost, and so just the construction cost of that, um, of the cells five A through five C is about 7.4 million dollars. And then you have some other costs in there as well as construction quality assurance, you know, engineering administration, construction drawings, and that brings it to about, uh, $8 million for the, the total cell construction for that. But, um, and that's all that I have. So I don't know if you had to add anything drilled, but.
So, um, as you can see, in summary, I guess you would summarize it, this, the, you applied for the, the slopes. It's in review by EPD.
Yeah.
It's been there. You've started that process in 2019.
Yes.
Haven't gotten it approved. It's unusual.
It is.
And we cannot wait to see if they're going to approve it between now and the end of the year. And so January 2026 is critical to us.
Yes.
And so we need to go ahead and proceed with, um, cell five.
Yes.
We know that we can complete that between now and the end of the year. And that space is available to us in January 2026. In the meantime, we still pursue the slopes, and we get that. And then if we have cell five and the slopes, and between the two, that will give us how many years? Twenty?
Gives you out to 2062.
Sixty, sixty-two?
Yeah. And I think that, you know, if you have phase five, that gives you an easy filling space where you can work on filling in those terraces in good weather, the right materials, and that actually gets you more airspace by doing it that way.
So, uh, with that said, we need about $8 million to move forward, to make that happen by January. And, uh, I'm going to have the finance director to talk about, um, how we handle that cost.
She can? Did you call DoorDash?
Um, so Angelica, the $8 million, talk about our reserve fund and where that money would come from.
Hello again. I'm sorry. I thought, uh, I was last on the list here. I do have a brief presentation. Um, but in terms of the, there we go. Um, in terms of funding, as the city manager mentioned, we will need about $8 million um, to do, uh, perform the much-needed, um, landfill expansion. Um, just real quickly, in terms of the Integrated Waste Fund, just to give you a quick snapshot in terms of where we are right now for that fund in particular, from a cash perspective, um, we have about $1.5 million on hand right now in cash, um, and investments. So those, uh, that's typically what we consider to be our reserves for the Integrated Waste Fund. Uh, we ended fiscal year 29, uh, 24, I'm sorry, with about 1.8 million of investments in cash on hand for in, for the Integrated Waste Fund. Um, currently on the books, we have about 17.2 million in landfill closure and post-closure liability, which right now puts us at a deficit of about $15.7 million, um, in terms of what we actually have in cash and what we'll need, um, for future landfill costs. So in terms of options, we do have, um, option A and B. Um, option A, uh, would be an $8 million loan from the general fund. Um, this is something that would be paid over time. I mean, it, it could be a long period of time. It'd be, to be quite honest about it. But in, in order for us to facilitate it as a loan or in, or in advance of such from the general fund to the Integrated Waste Fund, there would need to be some form of a commitment in terms of us, well, that fund realistically being able to pay back the general fund. Um, so that would, uh, create the need for increasing the garbage fees in some capacity. I mean, whatever that works out to be, we can work that out, obviously, during the budget process in terms of what that looks like, uh, whether it's, you know, in, the increase in the, um, tonnage at the, at the landfill itself, um, residential cost, whatever that may be. And some combination of a loan, uh, from the general fund to the Integrated Waste Fund. I mean, it could be the 8 million, it could be less than 8 million. Um, if you decide to go with option A. Option B, of course, would just be, um, the general fund providing a subsidy of $8 million to the Integrated Waste Fund. This is utilizing about 12 reserve days from our general fund reserves. You heard this morning, uh, that we do have, we've been fortunate enough to, um, build a, uh, healthy, uh, general fund reserve. And so, um, that is another option to just provide the funding from the general fund to the Integrated Waste Fund. Uh, one of the things I, things I kind of want to make mention of is, um, some of the usage, usages, I guess I should say, in reserves, whether it's the general fund or the Integrated Waste Fund for the last four fiscal years. So just as a reminder, we are using about 9 million, um, in general fund reserves for ongoing personnel, um, and operating costs. This includes new positions that have been approved for various offices and departments as well as public safety, um, enhancement, uh, pay enhancements for public safety. Uh, we did use, uh, recently about a million dollars to subsidize the above and beyond, um, pay implementation for, uh, pay plan implementation for the Integrated Waste Fund. Um, out of general fund reserves, we used about another 1.3 million to extend the privatization of the yard waste collection services. Um, that was a service that was provided by Amways. Um, we used out of the general fund about $2.6 million to purchase, um, Integrated Waste Fund equipment. And that is just general fund, um, reserves, uh, usage towards Integrated Waste Program that does not, um, account for the monies that were contributed to the fund from, um, the ARP funds. Um, out of the Integrated Waste Fund reserves, um, in recent years, we used about a million um, for the garbage fee waiver that was approved, um, a couple of years ago. Um, and to date, we've paid out to, um, Amways, which is the private contractor that we've used, um, to provide services for the Integrated Waste Program. We paid out close to $12 million since inception of us doing business with Amways. That goes back to June of 2021, and that's up through December of 2024. Um, and prior to, just as a little note here, um, prior to the privatization of some services for the Integrated Waste Program, um, we had about 11.8 million in reserves, and that was cash and investments on hand. And that was, um, the last time, um, it was, um, really that healthy, it was back in FY '21. And so, of course, we do have costs that are ongoing, um, due to the recycling hauling services that, um, Amways is continuing to provide to us, um, due to, um, us not being able to utilize the rec, the recycling center. Um, so in terms of the general fund, um, reserves, uh, currently, we're estimated at about 95.18 days. This is where we sort of, where we are at this point in time, based on what was already adopted in the budget for fiscal year '25. So, um, current, current estimates put us at about 95.18 days. And if we do provide a subsidy of sorts, whether it's a loan, because this money needs to be provided to the Integrated Waste Program fairly quickly, um, we are very limited in our other funding options. I know one of, one of the options that was, um, brought previously by the department was possibly a loan, uh, from the state, but, um, that comes at a cost. Um, the interest rate, interest rate ranging from about 3% to 5%. Um, and so it just, you know, honestly makes sense for us, uh, considering the, the healthy position of our general fund. Um, I guess you can say it's a blessed and a cursed kind of sort of, because, uh, we are blessed to be able to provide a loan of this capacity or subsidy of this capacity to the Integrated Waste Program from our general fund. But that does further reduce the reserves that we're currently, um, estimated at. Um, and, um, our, so our FY '25, uh, revised estimated reserves would be around 83 days. So.
So if you'll go back to the slide before that one. So, you know, you heard from the external auditor this morning, um, what areas are considered enterprise funds? And enterprise funds should be self-sufficient. Uh, you should not have to, um, borrow from the general fund to support any of those funds. If you look at this, I mean, it's obvious, um, though it's an enterprise fund, um, we are not able to, uh, make it self-sufficient because our garbage rate would be too high. And, you know, we've, and I was talking to the mayor, I can go and pull 20 presentations over the years that we've had about garbage rates. And it's just a, you know, we have that conversation, but we can't get there. And we probably will not get there. Um, last year, we went from 18 to 21. I don't know what we'll bring forward this year in the budget, but it will be at least a dollar. And if you do a dollar increase, you're still not even close to getting, to breaking even or making it an enterprise fund. We just have that situation. And, um, and so we'll bring something forward, but we're not going to be unrealistic to think that it's going to be the enterprise fund that it is in the next budget process. That's years down the road. And so we have closure, post-closure, and we've talked about our generation not paying it. It's going to be our children and our grandchildren, and it's just a situation we have. But the immediate situation before us, uh, while we are waiting to get EPD to approve the slopes, we need to go ahead and do cell five and have that ready for the new year '26. And then hopefully, they will approve the slopes sometime between now and then. And, and if we've got cell five and the slopes, it will give us a life in the landfill to 2062. That's where we are. And so we, we need your, uh, approval to move forward, uh, with 8 million to do what we need to do to get cell five ready. And it would come from general fund reserve.
Counselor Crabbe?
So if this is going to extend the life of our landfill for 37 years, why can't we take it out of the closure funds so that, because we'll have 37 years to pay that back?
So we don't have any closure funds. What she showed you is the liability. $17 million, uh, is, is what we should have in that fund that we don't have. And so when that time comes that we got to do closure or post-closure, we don't have funding to do that. We would have to come to the general fund, get a loan, do something, because we've not charged a garbage rate at the rate that we're putting money into the Integrated Waste Reserve. So if we had to close those today to do closure and post-closure, it would cost us what she's showing you.
But we don't have to do that today. We won't have to do that for 37 years.
No, she's just showing you what it would cost. That's the deficit that we have. We don't have, I, it, it sounds like you think we can get that, that money is there and we can get it from there. But there is no money there. That's a liability.
A liability.
That's on the books. That's a liability that's on the books.
I thought that I heard you guys say that we had been putting aside a little bit of money over the years to build up those funds so that we had them when we needed them.
Put the slide back up there. Now, if we had, if we were collecting a garbage rate at the rate that we should, we would be putting money into reserve, but we don't.
Okay, so why are we hearing about this now when we just had this discussion and we raised it by 3, $3? You guys have been working on this since 2019.
Yes. And we've had presentations where we've said the garbage rate should be $24 today, $26 in this year, and $28 in whatever year, let's say 2030. We've not approved, you've not approved those garbage rates. And so what we've done is we added 50 cents a couple of years ago, and last year, we put in $3. You've not approved those rates. And that's my point in that we can't get the rate to where it needs to be because of the impact it would have on the citizens, the people who would pay the garbage rate. If we pulled up the PowerPoint that Abby brought the last time, it would probably show you that our rate should be $28. Well, we're 21.
I may be mistaken, but it seems like we had some reserves built up, but that those were depleted during COVID, when we were hiring a contractor.
That's right.
And we kept extending, and what little we did have, which really, I don't think was enough to cover the closure and post closure, but it evaporated during that time period when we were trying to provide yard waste pickup.
And that's why she's showing you to date, we've paid Am Waste 11 million.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes, quick question. I heard the presentation this morning, and he stated we had about three and a half months in the fund balance. To me, I think that it would equate to over 100 days. Is that correct?
About, just over 100 days. I think it was 113 days.
113.
Yeah, okay. So I know that 60 million dollars is committed and specified out of that balance, correct?
No, the 113 days is actually all unassigned.
Okay. That was my question. All right, thank you.
Mayor Proton. Mayor Proton?
Yep, I just want to go back. How much does it cost us to, I guess, build out one sale to get it ready for? Just trying to get an idea per sale, how much it costs.
For one sale?
Yeah.
We haven't put the numbers to that. We look for the three sales.
Approximate.
For this one, I mean, I'd say you're probably at, you know, 5 million. And this one, the cost has increased a little bit because of the infrastructure, like basically the lift station that needs to go on that side. If you're just doing a next cell, I mean, it'd probably be somewhere in the range of 2 million if it was just the cell, you know?
So the minimum is you're starting around 2 million, and then you start doing the?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. That's closure, though. That doesn't include post closure and the.
None of these costs include closure, post closure costs.
And what's the cost of post closure?
Post closure, it's probably about $150,000 a year or something like that.
Keeps going.
I mean, yeah, it does go up every year. EPD sends out their inflation factor every year, and I think the current closure cost for all the phases is somewhere around 20 million.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Counselor Chambers?
So just for public knowledge, what are the ramifications if we don't take action on this?
Well, if you don't take action and we don't get the slopes approved by EPD come 2026, our landfill is going to be full. We're not going to have space, and we would be delayed until they approve the slopes. But, you know, and hopefully, they can do it, but we don't want to risk that.
Thank you.
Alabama. We'd have to contract with another.
We'd have to contract to haul it out. And so the thing is, I mean, we know that we don't have to rely on EPD to open Cell 5. We can put the infrastructure there and get it ready. And when that's ready, and hopefully, we will get the slopes approved. And so we've got the slopes and we've got Cell 5, and that puts us in a position that we have landfill space.
There was a discussion about, you know, kind of whistling past the graveyard where we tried to contact EPD and remind them politely but firmly that this has been in motion since 2019. We understand they lost manpower and everything during COVID, and I know they're struggling to get caught up, but, I mean, we should, two things got us here. One is just because of the way we had, we were forced to spend our money out of the reserve because we weren't really collecting enough. But the other one is because EPD has been strapped for getting these applications approved. And even though we started this at plenty of time, y'all probably remember, we talked about just changing the grading, and it was like 300 and something thousand or something, I can't remember. But we could talk to EPD and hope for, you know, a willing and listening ear on their part. And I think we could do both perhaps and try to reach out to them. My fear is if you push for an answer from EPD, they'll give you, the quick answer is going to be the one that is easiest for them to give, which is one that we won't like.
Yeah, so if there's no motion, Mayor, we'll move on.
I'll make a motion to fund it. So which option?
8 million would be A, option A. Yeah, from general fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're not on, I apologize. Hit my button. Was that, the 8 million is borrowing it from the general fund to be paid back? Is that correct?
Put it up there. If they can put the PowerPoint back up.
The question is, what is the finance director's recommendation for the funding?
Integrated Waste Fund is enterprise fund that should be self-supporting. I think it's a hard something to ask the general fund to give 8 million dollars to the integrated waste fund. My preference would be that it would be made in the form of a loan to be paid back over time, whether that's, you know, 10, 15 years, whatever that works out to be in terms of a rate increase, as the city manager mentioned, maybe a dollar. A dollar would likely have it repaid back within about 15 years.
My motion was for the repayment, so it would be option A.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a motion to borrow the money, I guess, as it were, from.
Advance the money from the general fund.
And then repay it from that fund. Counselor Crabbe to the motion?
Yeah, I guess, I'm just like, my head's about to explode, and I'm just like shaking my head because two hours ago, our finances were awesome, you know, just incredible, and now all of a sudden, we have this situation. It's just going, it's, my neck is going to get whiplash from going back and forth so fast like this. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot to, to, you know, grasp onto when we just, you know, two hours ago, we were talking about the audit results and how wonderful, you know, our finances were, and now we've got this. I mean, I'm sorry, this is just really hard for me to grasp.
I get it, I think, but if you put it in perspective, I think because our finances were in such good shape, because we've managed the finance department in such good fashion, the money is there for, this is one of those emergencies that you don't see coming. We started our process years ago.
It started in 2019.
Yes, but that was, then it was all left up to EPD to approve it. And if they approved it tomorrow, we could go ahead and start construction. But we started it way back in 2019 to give ample time for us to get the restructuring and pay for that terracing that would have extended the life of the cell, and we would not be here discussing this other one.
Well, and Mayor, and so, Mayor, the hope has been that EPD would approve the slopes and we move on. And so we're going to pay to open the sale, whether we do it today or whether we do it five years from now. You're going to pay to open the sale. And in all likelihood, it's going to cost you much more to open it five years from now. And so we're not doing something that we're going to lose ground on. We're doing something that's going to expand the landfill until 2062.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, this is extremely unusual. We're going into the budget cycle, I mean, right before the budget cycle, and you're putting this on our agenda today. And I'm just going to tell you, I'm not going to make the argument why we have to do it today or do it tomorrow. I'm just going to tell you that I'm not ready to do it. And without some more deliberation, I need to digest this as one of our fellow counselors. You vote on A, you're voting really, you're asking us to raise the integrated waste fee today, which you'll put in the budget. So, I mean, I want to explore other options. You want to finance it internally, well, I'd like to see what external financing options are. I mean, I don't know that yet. So I guess I'm telling you, I hadn't had enough time to process it, and I agree, you know, it's been a long day, and you're asking us to make a big decision here, which normally we have time to work through these things through the budget cycle. So anyway, that's just my position.
Well, Mayor, we can leave it there. I just want you to know the TAM land that we're working with, and we don't have.
I can accept all that. I hope you appreciate my position.
I do. And so as soon as we got the numbers and felt that we needed to make you aware, we're making you aware, and the clock is ticking to get Cell 5 ready for January 2026 or to get EPD to approve the plan, and if they approve it, we're good. But we will prolong the inevitable, we are going to have to open Cell 5, you know, whether it's now or two years from now or five years from now. We're going to have to open it, and I just want to be in a position that we can not, that we can be ready.
No, and I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. I'm not, I'm just definitely, I'm not arguing that.
Sure, I understand.
You know, I'm just trying to deliberate a little bit more. I can't do that, I really can't do that today.
So, Mayor, we will move on.
Well, we've got a motion on the table. We've got a couple of the counselors. We had a motion second, so we just need to, I think it's second, wasn't it seconded? Yeah, all right. So Counselor Tucker to the motion?
Yes, I was actually going to ask if we could get exactly what it would look like to pay it, because you were saying, an amount of years. And, you know, all the time when I ask for the impact, like, I want to see it and, you know, be able to show it to the citizens of exactly what 8 million dollars looks like in a loan over a 10-year span or however long this span is going to be. If we can look at that option, I know Counselor Davis just asked a question about external, I don't know about that, but just to bring that information back that way, if a decision is made, it's made based on knowledge. And as I said, it's all, we trust, but we want to verify. And that's all it is, is verification. That way, we can see exactly what the pay plan will look like over a span of however many years, 10 or 20. And I think it'd be better to make a decision based on knowledge of how much it would be. And I also heard, you know, maybe a $2, I guess, like a combination, maybe a $2 increase on integrated waste fees, kind of balancing it out and not doing a total 8 million based on that $2 increase, but just looking at a combination if we could get those.
So, Mayor, we will bring back at the next meeting some additional information. And see, from a garbage rate increase standpoint, I don't know what would be in the budget, but I wasn't even thinking a $2 increase. I mean, we just, it's supposed to be an enterprise fund, but we're not, I don't know that we're ready to do that. If I go back and pull the integrated waste study, I can't remember what it would be this year, but it was, it was like the first year out the gate, it was $24, $25. But we can't get there yet. And so even with $2, if we went $2, it would be at 23, but that's still not, you're not going, you're not going to make up the difference because you're just not, we can't get there. So, Mayor, we'll bring some additional information, but we're going to be sensitive as we bring it and as we bring the budget forward to any garbage rate increase. We just can't have an outrageous increase. It has to be something reasonable, affordable. So we'll bring some additional information, Mayor.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll withdraw the motion until we get additional information.
But so that there's no, you know, people watching, we're not getting ready to do, I don't, at least it won't be recommended up the chain, we're not getting ready to do a drastic increase on garbage fee, you know?
Counselor Davis?
I mean, we just can't.
Mr. City Manager, just while you look at that, just, you know, I'm going to go back and think about other ways to fund it also, and I would ask if your staff could present us with other options to fund it externally or if there's any other avenue internally.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all I have today.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, before I get started, I want to state for the record that Counselor Crabbe was out of the chamber for the first item on the city attorney's agenda and for items 1 through 4 on the city manager's agenda, but she has requested to be listed in favor of those items. On the clerk's agenda, item 1 is an email requesting that the seat of Ernest Smallman be declared vacant on the hospital authority.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Item 2 is a letter from Mr. Jeffcoat resigning from his seat.
Motion second to receive with regret. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Crabbe?
I have a nominee to list for you at the next meeting. He's resigning from that seat so that he can accept the appointment from Counselor Crabbe.
I'd like to nominate Ernie Smallman for Doug Jeffcoat's seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, I will list your nominee and Counselor Huff's nominee at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll be listed as a nomination for that meeting so that we can follow protocol.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Item 3 is travel authorization request from Counselor Huff. He would like to attend the ACCG annual conference during the month of April 2025.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have minutes of various boards.
Motion second to receive the minutes. Anyone want any edited or pulled to look at? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Thomas from today.
All right, motion second, excuse Counselor Thomas. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? She's excused.
We have an add-on request. This is a travel authorization for Counselor Tucker. She would also like to attend ACCG in April.
Motion to approve. There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
The next two appointments are listed for confirmation. The next two appointments are listed for confirmation. We have Doug Jeffcoat for the Board of Tax Assessors and Alisa Neal for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
There's a motion second to confirm Mr. Jeffcoat. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? He's confirmed.
Okay, that was actually both of them, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it was both of them?
Alisa Neal.
Okay, I only heard Doug, I apologize.
Yes, sir. Next, we have the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. On the Building Authority of Columbus, we have Renee Sterkey. She is eligible. Mr. Mayor, I will be reaching out to her to see if she is interested.
If you'll, if you'll check on those individuals, all of them are eligible to succeed. I'd like to reappointment, reappoint them if they're willing to serve.
Yes, sir, I will check with them. Next, we have the Community Development Advisory Council. All of these members are eligible to serve another term. We have Anthony Montgomery, Denise Cambridge, and Benjamin Link. For the Crime Prevention Board, we have Danny Ardenseba. He is the chairperson. And Rocky Marsh, he is the Fort, excuse me, I was about to say Fort Benning, Fort Moore Liaison. Both of these are eligible to serve another term. We have Dr. Angela Vickers, the Education Community Rep., and Assistant Chief Joyce Dent Fitzpatrick. She serves as our Law Enforcement Agency Rep. Neither one of these are eligible to serve another term. Next, we have council's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. We have the Civic Center Advisory Board, Charles E. Huff Jr. for District One, and he is eligible to serve another term. We have Daniel Woodward, District Two, and he is eligible. Gregory Blue for District Three, eligible. Terrence Little Sr. for District Four, he is eligible. He can be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
The next two are also eligible. We have Romeo Vile for District Seven, Johnson Trewick for District Eight. And the ones that are eligible to serve, they have not been nominated tonight. I will check with them on their interest.
Madam Clerk, if we could go back, I, I just let walk through this. I'm going to reappointment, reappoint Mr. Aaron Seba and Rocky Marsh and for the Crime Prevention Board. And Angela Florence will be submitted to take the place of Chief Joyce Dent Fitzpatrick.
I'm sorry, what was that name?
Angela Florence.
Okay.
She's sergeant with the police force.
All right, these nominations can be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments, and any nominations will be listed for the following meeting. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have Sean Roberts, who is eligible to serve another term. The Building Authority of Columbus, we have Johnny Byrd and Tyler Martin Deal. Both of them are eligible. For Circle, we have Samantha, Samantha Wooden, Natasha Banks, excuse me, that's it. Both of them are eligible to serve another term. Thank you, Counselor Huff. We'll have him listed at the next meeting for confirmation. For the Crime Prevention Board, we have Erica Cottingham for Senatorial District 29. She is eligible. Thank you. We will list her for confirmation at the next meeting. Next, we have Marcus Gibson for Senatorial District 15. He is not eligible to serve another term. We have Lane Jimmerson, that is, is at-large position, and they are not eligible either. The next ones are the alternate members that were listed for the Personnel Review Board for several meetings now. We have Dennis Walsh, Willie Bellfield, and Donna Baker. Excuse me. Then for the Planning Advisory Commission, we have Dr. Xavier McCaskey, Ralph King, and Larry Derby. None of these are eligible to serve another term. And then for the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, we have Monte Galvres. And that is all we have, Mr. Mayor. Circle.
Natasha Banks, re-nominate. And Counselor Tucker?
Um, yes, sir. I, I was, it went a little fast. The Community Development Advisory Council, did you re-nominate Denise Cambridge? I know she wants to continue to serve.
Yeah, I think we, I think we nominated all of those, didn't we? Did I not do that?
You did it on Crime Prevention. No.
Okay.
Crime Prevention.
Yeah, because I, I think what we had said we were going to do is check with all of those individuals, make sure, and we'll do it one time.
Oh, well.
Just because they're all eligible, we haven't been able, we haven't been able to catch up with them just yet, so we'll get them re-nominated.
Yes, I have not had the opportunity to check with everyone, so I will be doing that.
We can get it next week.
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that.
And she, she does want to serve again.
Do what now?
Yes, they'll be listed for confirmation the next meeting, Counselor Huff. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Madam Clerk? All right, we had a request for executive session to discuss personnel issues. There's a motion to go into executive session, there's a second. There's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we have been in executive session discussing personnel. There were no votes taken. All right, there's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.